Okay Brenda, we should be unmuted. We're ready for you.
Brenda, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you so much. So many buttons. Are we ready for meeting rules, or do we do the minutes first?
Um, we do a couple of other things first.
Okay, great.
So I am the chair and I'm welcoming everybody to the February 8th, 2023 Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. And I'm now going to call the roll. Von Carroll.
President.
Dave Kunz.
President.
Michelle Estrella.
I'm here.
And Caroline Miller is on her way and so that means we have a quorum, even without her gets here. Brenda, would you go through the rules for the meeting, please?
Absolutely. I am just pulling those up. Give me one moment. All right. Can everyone see that? And am I on the right thing? All right. Great. So thank you for those of you who've joined us online to participate in tonight's meeting. And we do like to share these at all of our public meetings. We know some of you may have seen them many times. And so we appreciate your patience while we go through them tonight for those who might be less familiar. And we'd like to share that the city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports both the physical and emotional safety of community members, staff, and board and commission members. Sorry, this one says council. As well as supporting democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes that led to it, you can go to our website, bouldercolorado.gov, and type "productive atmospheres" into the search bar there. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revise Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. And again, I apologize, I pulled up my council version instead of my board version, but I will say it correctly, I promise. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any other person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability of the meeting to continue are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak or to raise their hand. And we ask that you use the name that you're commonly known by. We do need to see that name displayed online. So if you plan to speak tonight and think your name might not be displayed correctly, let me know and I'm happy to change that for you. You can reach out to me in the Q and A box. Currently only audio testimony is permitted online. And the last point is about in-person participation, which we don't have tonight, so we don't need to worry about that one. And I think that brings us to the next part of the agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Brenda. Next is the approval of the minutes from the January 11th Open Space Board of Trustees. Are there revisions that anyone would like to?
If you don't want to change the month date to February.
We just want to change the year. You may just want to change the year on that.
Good idea, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Under, under public participation. Um, I went back and looked at my notes and I don't think the speakers under public participation spoke about CU South. I think they spoke about environmental mitigation and flood plain restoration. At the South Boulder Creek site. So maybe we could change the references to CU South. Anything on page two? There were a couple of things that I noted as I went through my notes. On line three. Concern for the overuse of southern grasslands receiving sites. Maybe overuse is not the right word, but degradation of the vegetation or what can we say about that?
Potential impacts.
Oh, good. Potential impact. On the southern grasslands receiving sites. And then continuing on that line. And the possibility of using other receiving sites. Because we talked about Rockland Flats and the use of a receiving site down in Pueblo and somewhere else. And then, uh, next to the last line. Suggestions for reducing costs and expanding oh, and expanding treatments by bringing removal and lethal control in-house and having seasonal workers help with treatment. Is that okay with everyone? And, and then on that, the next paragraph that begins with Joe Teguc's name. On the third line, after the word resolutions, I wanted to insert groundwater flow prior to, during, and after construction of the flood. And then the groundwater, wetland, and baseline monitoring. And in the next line. Soil and source of seed and plant materials. And then right before timeline, we also talked about the cost, cost and timeline. So those are the only suggestions that I have. Caroline, did you have any suggestions for the minutes?
I do not, and I apologize to everyone for being late. I was at the wrong building.
We're glad you're here.
Karen, I, I think those are all good suggestions that I would like to make a friendly addition to the speakers under public comment. I, I think we ought to be sure, and I think your suggestion was a good one, that we ought to put it in the context of the South Boulder Creek Flood Mitigation proposed project. So people are, people know that that was.
That it's environmental mitigation and flood plain restoration. At the South Boulder Creek site.
Well, flood mitigation project site.
Okay. Leah, is that okay?
Yes. I feel like I do remember reference to CU South specifically and at least one or two of those folks.
Yeah, I was thinking you, I think you could put CU South in there as far as, you know, kind of including that in the project.
But have the project name specifically.
Right.
Sure. Sounds good. Okay, anything else from anybody?
We got the year, right?
Yep, and we got the year up at the top. And the month.
The whole day.
The date is correct. Do I hear a motion?
I'll, I'll motion to approve the minutes from the January 11th, 2023 meeting. It's amended.
I second.
Thank you. All in, oh, we have to do a voice, right?
Yes.
Uh, okay, let me call the members of the board and we'll hear whether you're in favor or not. John?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
And I support the motion too, so it's approved unanimously. At this, on this meeting's agenda, there are no opportunities for public comment during the meeting. So this period of time for public comment is the only opportunity for the public to speak to the board this evening. And so given that we're in the public comment period, I think I'm going to turn it over to Brenda. Is that right?
I think that's correct. I am ready to go. Uh, so we do have some folks who have signed up in advance, so we'll start with those folks. But we encourage anyone else who is in attendance this evening who would like to speak to use your raise hand button to indicate that you would like to participate. So your raised hand button can be found at the bottom of your screen. And you are welcome to click that button at any time to let us know you'd like to speak. If I don't see your full name displayed, I will reach out to you before it's your turn to ask for that name and I'll get that changed for you. So what you're going to see, we're going to do some technology wizardry for the timer. So what you're going to see is and, but you'll still hear my voice because I will let you know who the next speakers are. And then I'll turn on the timer in my box. Uh, I'm, so you can see it a little further now. So it's a beautiful lake landscape in Boulder. Now it will be our timer very shortly. We'll start with Lawrence McDonald, followed by Paula Schuler, followed by Elizabeth Black. So Lawrence, I will enable your microphone and as you begin to speak, I will start the timer. You should be able to speak now. I see that you're unmuted, but I don't hear you. Want to try that again? And if you are on a phone or a computer, you might want to check your own speaker settings. So Larry, let me give you a minute while we go to our next speaker. So if you don't mind just holding on a moment, we will go with Paula Schuler and then we'll come back to you, Larry. Paula, you should be able to unmute.
And actually, can Elizabeth follow me because our talks go together? Is that?
Sure, yeah. Larry will just ask for a little more patience from you and Elizabeth Black go after Paula. And Paula, I will go ahead and start the timer for you. So go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paula Schuler and I spoke to you in January encouraging OSMP to bring prairie dog management on irrigated lands in-house and purchase a couple of perk machines. Elizabeth Black and I are here tonight to continue that conversation. Following the January OSBT meeting, I attended Boulder County's annual prairie dog meeting. The county's year-end report clearly showed how much the county is accomplishing as well as the cost savings they realized because they own their own perk equipment and hire seasonal crews. The county gets much more done for a lot less money. OSMP is in the process of investigating and assessing in-house management options and equipment purchases. We strongly encourage Open Space to continue that quest and take action before budgets are finalized. OSMP has cited contractor issues and barrier costs as reasons why more acres per year are not being managed. Purchasing perk machines and hiring seasonal crews would allow OSMP to manage more acres per year, control their own removal schedule by not relying on contractor availability, and save substantial funds that could be used for other projects. These crews can also build chicken wire barriers for even more cost savings and efficiency. This can make a big difference. It's time to take the next step. Following the city annual prairie dog meeting in December, OSMP said, "One major con of buying perk machines is that we would need to make significant investments in equipment that may not be needed long-term as lethal control efforts will likely only be required for follow-up control." Purchasing equipment does have an initial investment, but the investment is truly not that significant. Two machines can easily pay for themselves in the first year. 668 irrigated acres with prairie dog conflicts still remain in the project area. And on top of that, six or more irrigated parcels outside the project area need management. It is our hope that all irrigated parcels in the project area will be completed in the next few years and that OSMP can then move to clearing other parcels with prairie dog occupation. OSMP will always be able to utilize these machines in some capacity, even well after they have paid for themselves. This is a management strategy worth investing in. Throughout the project area, restored irrigated parcels where prairie dogs have been removed are showing both visible and measurable positive results. With all the recent moisture this spring, this spring should reveal even more progress. This is exciting. We encourage OSMP to keep up all the good work, but ask them to purchase equipment so the project area can be completed in a more timely, efficient, and cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula.
And, and the timer was not on my screen, just my name was. So I hope that was, okay.
Oh, that was exactly on time, Paula. So thank you. I apologize that you couldn't see that. And next we will have Elizabeth Black. Oh, sorry. I have a few new buttons tonight, so there might be some interesting gymnastics on the screen. Elizabeth, we will enable your microphone as you begin. I'll start the timer.
Elizabeth Black, can you hear me?
Now we.
Along with Paula Schuler, I ask Open Space to buy a couple perk machines and hire an in-house crew to realize significant savings in your prairie dog management. Several folks have told me how frustrated they were that lots of other community needs were getting shorted when I told them how much was spent on prairie dogs. I hope you had a chance to look at the spreadsheet I sent you comparing OSMPs and the county's prairie dog management. There are four big takeaways from my cost comparison. First, the county was able to accomplish two and a half times the work for half the price by using in-house seasonal crew rather than private contractors. Using a perk crew also lowered their costs for barrier installation, SPV vaccination, delta dusting, mapping, and land restoration. The county's perk crew does a whole lot more than perk and cuts lots of other costs. OSMP could do something similar. Secondly, the two different agencies have quite different strategies regarding barriers. OSMP builds barriers that surround the cleared acres and seems to have a clear and protect forever strategy using about 10 times the feet of barrier per acre cleared as the county does. The county, on the other hand, builds barriers only when active colonies are on the other side of the fence and has more of a clear, protect the most vulnerable reach and then tidy up later strategy. I don't know which strategy is more effective, but I know which one is more expensive. About half of OSMP's cleared properties now have incursions coming through gates and burrowing under the wire mesh. Paula and I believe that barriers can never provide forever protection. Rather, barriers can slow down recolonization, especially if incursions are dealt with immediately. But barriers also require constant maintenance. The third takeaway is that tenants and neighbors are valuable partners in decreasing overall costs. The county works closely with neighbors and tenants, loaning tenants perk machines and rodent control cartridges, reimbursing them for restoration work, and sharing barrier construction with neighbors. OSMP, on the other hand, does not share control efforts with tenants and does not partner with neighbors. Finally, there are opportunity costs to other city programs from costly management. Budgets are finite even for a rich city like Boulder and a rich department like Open Space. Saving $200,000 could beef up trail maintenance or double the junior ranger program or aid in wildfire mitigation. Thank you very much for your consideration of our, our request and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And we'll try Larry McDonald, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Excellent work.
All right, good work. Good. Well, my name is Larry McDonald. I live in 2160 Linden Avenue in North Boulder. It, long ago, I was a member of the Open Space Board of Trustees. It was a really terrific experience, but I also know that it's a lot of work and I appreciate all the effort you all put into doing what you can to help the program, a very important program for all of us. I am speaking to you tonight because I was made aware of the fact that the city has proposed to alter our charter using an ordinance to address the, the meaning of passive recreation in the context of e-bikes. And I was concerned because the charter, in, in my view, and I think the view of many, most all of us, is such a fundamental part of our open space program. It really represents a commitment made by a lot of very committed citizens quite a long time ago to put in place a program that has stood the test of time as being a really outstanding program nationally recognized. But, you know, a charter i- is not like just another ordinance. It is essentially a constitution, as I'm sure you've, you've been hearing. And to amend a constitution, you don't do that by ordinance, as you do that by a vote of the people. I cannot reconcile the idea that we could define passive recreation as, including e-bikes. And whatever one thinks of the wisdom of, of e-bikes, it seems to me very clear that it is essential that this question, whether we want to change the charter and redefine what are acceptable uses of open space to include e-bikes, that that can and should be done by a vote of the people. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. And next we will have Sandra. Um, sorry, Sandra Larson. I apologize if I pronounce your last name incorrectly. Once you begin, Sandra, I will start the timer for you.
Thank you. Larson is correct. I don't see the timer though. I'm Sandra Larson. I live in South Boulder.
Sorry, Sandra, let me just give you one pro tip so that hopefully you can see it. If your view is in speaker, then you won't be able to see it. So you'll want to click up in the upper right corner where it says view.
I don't have any options here. I don't have any controls on my video.
Okay, sorry about that. Let me try one thing and then hopefully you'll be able to see that. I'll go ahead and start it again.
Thank you. All right, I'm Sandra Larson. I live in South Boulder. I'm commenting on the proposal to authorize e-bikes on OSMP trails. I don't oppose e-bikes in general. I'm thinking about getting one myself. There are lots of multi-use paths and bike lanes around here where I can safely ride. Rather, a lot of existing rules must be changed to allow e-bikes for motorized recreation on OSMP trails, as the previous speaker noted. That suggests this change is not really very compatible with the Open Space Charter. Two of the proposed trails serve as good examples of where e-bikes are not compatible with definitions of passive recreation as previously interpreted. One example is the White Rocks Trail. The map in your packet shows just how narrow it is. Right now, it's also rather soggy due to the new resident beaver. It has a lot of hard right turns or hard right angle turns with fences that limit where pedestrians can step off the trail or cyclists can swing wide. A friend of mine who has had two hips replaced likes to walk at White Rocks because it has no dogs. She worries that a dog will jump on her and cause a disabling fall, so she chooses that trail. Cyclists traveling on heavy bikes at higher speeds will make this trail more dangerous for her. Another place where I oppose e-bikes is South Boulder Creek Trail between Marshall Road and South Boulder Road. This, another dog-free trail, is ideal for pedestrians who move slowly. After an illness, I walked here to regain my strength and balance. Some preschools bring groups of young children to this trail to safely observe and learn from nature. These are just two examples of trails that I know well that are proposed for e-bikes. I don't know all the others, but these two examples make me wonder if staff chose these trails by looking at the map to optimize connectivity or if they spent time on the ground walking the trails, seeing how people use them to optimize user experiences. It's not clear to me why this change is needed when we have so many good places to cycle already and such a finite amount of open space. The open space system should include places where people can walk in nature without constant vigilance. Adding e-bikes that go fast does reduce the enjoyment, safety, and quality of natural experience for people who go slow. Please protect quiet pedestrian-friendly trails on the plains. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Sandra. And our next speaker is Richard Harris. And I do see a speaker with his hands up with just a first name. So Brad, if you could send me your last name in the Q and A box, that would be great. I can get that changed before it's your turn to speak. In the meantime, we will have, whoa, I lost Richard Harris. Hold on. Hold on just one moment, please. Um, I meant to unmute Richard Harris. I apologize. My buttons are trickier tonight. So we'll have Richard Harris first and then we'll have Brad.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, I can't believe it, but I'm grateful. So I'm speaking for Plan Boulder County. Plan Boulder strongly objects to the characterization of the use of e-bikes on open space as passive recreation. Anything with a motor is motorized. And by the Open Space Charter and its supporting documents, not passive recreation. Changing the agreements around what is passive recreation cannot be done, as I heard before, by city staff or a city ordinance. This requires a change to the Open Space Charter by a vote of the citizens. OSMP proposals do not include transportation. E-bikes should only be allowed where specifically designated to enable access to regional trails built by multiple government jurisdictions. These trails should meet certain criteria and we recommend the following. Careful definition of what constitutes a qualifying regional trail is developed, not yet. And only a trail that fits that just definition be considered for bike use. Second bullet, that trails fit the above definition for e-bike use be designated in the Open Space Master Plan as the only trails appropriate for e-bike use. Karen Holwig has copies of my notes if you are interested in having one for yourself. Other open space trails that do not conform to this what, oh, definition be closed to use by e-bikes. Form of intergovernmental agreement be created to control the use across multiple jurisdictions. Such IGA's include management details and enforcement. And finally, that design specifications for regional trails be used by e-bikes, to be used by e-bikes, be created that allow multi-use of the trails by all allowed users, including pedestrians, horseback riders, et cetera, et cetera. OSBT should not recommend disposal of OSMP trails to allow e-bikes delegating or repealing ordinance 7525. The ordinance was passed the last time there was a community conflict over prohibition of e-bikes. It has served to clarify the restrictions. Plan Boulder has spent many years following the issues related to our open space program and advocating for its preservation. for its preservation and enhancement. About 85% of open space users are pedestrians. However, trails that allow bikes of whatever kind greatly reduce pedestrian use. This will only be worse with e-bikes. This is the ultimate slippery slope of the evolution of the purpose of open space. Therefore, it's critical that OSBT carefully frame and limit the circumstances under which e-bikes be allowed on open space. Thank you very much.
Karen, can you please distribute the, um, Richard's document electronically? Or somebody do so?
I have hard copies that I've passed around the table here.
Uh, Richard, would you mind emailing that to our board if you have, when you have a chance?
Sorry, I had muted Richard. Richard, are you able to email that to the board? All right, we'll chat the, uh, the email address to you, Richard. All right. Moving to our next speaker, Brad Fountain. Also, I realize we have some folks who've joined us by phone and if you would like to speak and you're on the phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand because you don't have a raise hand button. So your raise hand button looks like star nine. In the meantime, Brad Fountain, please, Brad, once you speak, I will start the timer. Brad, you should be able to unmute now. Brad is the last hand that I see up, Karen, so I will look to you to see if we would, how we would like to give Brad a chance to speak. I'm sorry.
Um, I don't, do you know whether Brad can hear us?
I'm not, I, I don't have a, a way to know that. And maybe that he stepped away.
Brad, if you can hear us, type something in the
Just took down his hand, so he missed it.
Okay. So Brad
We need to have you unmute, Brad.
You should see your microphone icon at the bottom of your screen. All right, well, we do have Bob and Dorothy who are not showing their last name, but we'll ask them to start with their last name as they speak. And we'll go to Bob and Dorothy and then we will try Brad one more time. So Bob and Dorothy, please share your full names once I unmute you, please. You should be able to unmute now.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Um, this is Bob Worley. Dorothy's not here. We are e-bikers. I'm in my seventies, we're both in our seventies. And have, I have some health limitations, love e-biking. I live right on a trail that's supposed to be closed to e-bikes, Cotton Tail Trail. From, it runs from Lookout down to on where Seventy-Fifth is. And I've, I've lived here for 30 years plus. And that trail, the, the normal bikes go just as fast as e-bikes. And I don't see, I don't see the reason in the first place that class one or two e-bikes uh, do any more damage to trails or, or a bigger safety threat than regular bicycles. But at any rate, I don't, I don't feel like closing off the trails, especially one linking like it is in my backyard is a benefit to anybody. So I'm against, I'm, I'm for the plan to open the trails that link in Boulder County. I guess that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. And I am not currently seeing any other hands up at this time. Again, if you are on the phone, you should try star nine. Otherwise, now would be last call. But we do have Brad back in the meeting. So I will go ahead and try Brad again. Brad, you are able to use your mute button now.
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you so much.
Thanks for being patient. I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to point out that a couple of the commenters within the last half hour have referred to e-bikes as motorized vehicles. I think we all know that they are not classified as motorized vehicles at all. They're classified as bicycles. Additionally, it's been stated that e-bikes go really fast and faster than regular bikes. The fact is that the class of e-bikes that are being considered for additional open space trail access are quite honestly, no faster than traditional bicycles and mountain bikes are. My wife and I rely on mountain biking on our e-bikes and riding paved trails as well is our primary source of exercise and activity. And unfortunately, we feel fairly restricted in Boulder County in terms of where we can ride our bikes illegally and obey regulations. Please, uh, open these trails up for us. And I, that's about the last thing I have to say. Thank you for being patient. Give me a chance to speak.
Thanks, Brad.
With that, I think that is our last hand I see up, so I will just give a long moment. Oh, Richard Harris's hand is back up and went back down. We can't allow folks to speak twice. So apologies for that, Mr. Harris, but each, each community member gets one three-minute speaking period. If you have further comments, you can email them to the board.
Thank you, Brenda.
All right, I think we're clear to close.
Thanks. Before we go on, I wanted to check and see whether staff had any comments to make in response to the Purdy Dog comments that were made by Paula and Elizabeth.
Yeah, just the fact that, um, what we reiterated last month was the fact that our staff is going to go through a pretty thorough and comprehensive assessments already underway about the, a couple of years that are under our belt with implementing the preferred alternative approach and certainly the issues that Paula and Elizabeth have raised about options of bringing more things into house, equipment, that sort of thing is, is part of that assessment. And we'll be back to the board, uh, later this spring, probably late spring, uh, to provide more details of what what our assessment is, cleaning and learning and, uh, any changes that we would probably make to, would like to make to the, uh, management approach.
Great. Looks like there could be some promising savings.
That cost would be something, one of the aspects that we'd be looking at for sure.
Good. Any other, uh, comments about public comments? Okay, then the next item on our agenda is questions or comments about the written information memos that are part of the board packet. Uh, those include the water service line easement memo for Boulder Valley Farms, the trailheads update, and the Chautauqua Access Management Program. Do any members of the board have questions about those memos?
Um, I know we're gonna get more information, I think in April on camp, Chautauqua Access Management Program. But I'm wondering if you all have any sense for whether a price increase would be considered or is that a, a price increase considered in a different process? Other than the camp process?
I don't have that level of detail. I'm wondering if Francis is on, uh, Francis Bowden is our representative in that effort. Um, pricing wouldn't be probably something that the OSMP reps would be leading the, uh, the effort on. We would probably be part of that discussion. Uh, but, um, I am, I am unaware.
Francis on the meeting, she just isn't a panelist.
She will be in just a second.
Okay, yeah, maybe Francis could quickly chime in to see if pricing is one of the aspects that's part of the evaluation.
Yeah, and is it currently $2.50 an hour? Is that, is my, my memory correct?
I think it is.
Francis, you should be able to unmute. The buttons are, are not working for everybody tonight. Francis, you should be able to access your mute button now.
If, if Francis isn't available, I've, I've participated in a meeting today with the camp team with Francis. The the strategies are still being developed, I think, um, in terms of what will come next. Um, I don't know the pricing, so I don't know if it's 2.50, um, but I think that, uh, price increase might be something to consider. Um, and it is being led by transportation and mobility team. So, um, one of the first, one of the next steps will be engagement with stakeholders to better understand what, what the input is regarding things like pricing increases and how the program has worked.
Thanks, Marnie.
Is that helpful, Michelle?
Yeah, it is. I, I think I was on the Chautauqua Board at the time that camp was coming through. Um, can you hear me now?
Uh, it's the problem on our end.
Yeah, I'm on, I'm not muted, so.
We can't hear you.
I can hear Michelle on Zoom.
Very interesting. I'll keep talking to see if the room will hear me.
Of course.
I could see those flickering earlier about us.
Yeah, just
Usually means they can hear us.
There's Francis.
Sorry, my Zoom is updating.
Oh, still can't hear you, Francis.
Yeah, we can't hear anyone. Great.
It looks like it's on our end.
Yeah, but I can hear you, Francis.
Is still there.
Oh, nice, primal.
I can also mention on camp, I'm just looking at an IP that went to council earlier this month. Marnie, you probably know. It basically says next steps, April, May, there's tentative, uh, engagement with OSPT. And then later in the summer as well.
And to the board.
Yep, yeah. So they're, they're saying April to May, they'll be coming with some initial findings and things to tab in OSPT. Um, so that would help inform. I think right now it's probably too early to know what all options are exploring, but like Marnie said, it might be something they look at. And then IP's been included in your board packet.
Yeah. So you all could hear my initial question?
Oh, there we go.
So you all could hear my initial question, um, and, and then I, I can wait until April. I was just wondering if you had a heads up on whether a price increase is going, uh, maybe considered, but it sounds like it, it, anything's a possibility. And we'll find out more in April or May.
That sounds right, based on what we know in this room.
And Francis is shaking her head positively. Using all four communication sign language is next.
Yeah, keep waving. Did you have another question, Michelle on camp?
No, thank you.
Okay, I, I had one question on, on the bullet on the top of page two on the camp memo. It says, um, the staff is seeking to find a balance between providing access to open spaces, a community benefit, and protecting open spaces from the impacts of exceeding carrying capacity. And I was just wondering what metrics were going to be used or who is defining, uh, the carrying capacity that will be used there?
Great question, Karen.
And in the room, good.
Did I lose them again?
Nope.
Someone wants to unmute their laptop. We could hear through someone's laptop. Tell things go sideways. And the TV starts working again.
So I can hear you, Francis.
We can't hear you.
Okay, now we can.
It's almost like
Want to just use someone's laptop?
Well, we can try. Let me mute that one if we're gonna do that.
Because the microphone's working. Seems like they can hear us.
It seems like they can hear us.
We just need a, a speaker.
I can hear you all.
Can you hear us now? They can't hear us now.
Yeah, I can hear the room and it sounds like Francis can hear me. Whew, this is, uh, gonna be a doozy, I think.
I feel like I'm breaking it, so I turned my mic off, but I don't know.
It's bizarre because I can, I can definitely hear you, Francis.
I can also hear you, so that's reassuring.
Francis or Michelle, could you try talking again to see if it?
Yeah, Francis and I have had a really healthy conversation over here.
Maybe, maybe we're that question also for when we come back. From my computer, which is gonna be
Is that Francis's voice?
Yeah. On my computer, which we can do, but is that gonna be loud enough?
It weren't working temporarily. I think. No.
Nick's responding to the chat too.
Yeah.
There's any trouble shooting.
What happened?
Francis, there's no baby calling all over you. As much as I love seeing that.
He's downstairs, he's not far.
Francis, I feel like things did change when I promoted you to a panelist. So what if I put you back to an attendee and then enable your microphone? Does that feel okay? Let's try that and see if it makes
I can hear her now. She's fine now.
You can hear her now. I don't know why it would make a difference because this has never happened before, but that's how Zoom works. It just throws hurdles on every visit. Um, so, you can hear me now, you should go. Can we hear now?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Great, okay. Yeah, my, um, my Zoom crashed and restarted when I was added as a panelist, so maybe that was part of it. Uh, but Karen, great question. Um, I, so really defining carrying capacity for Chautauqua as it pertains to open space is probably out of the scope of the camp evaluation this year. We included some acknowledgement of that language in the IP, just recognizing that, um, shuttles do in, or can impact the overall amount of visitation and how people access open space. So that'll be part of what we're looking about, at in the evaluation. So that'll be part of what we're looking about at in the evaluation is ridership to visitation. That kind of thing. So we'll be looking at it, but we won't be defining like clear thresholds of this is the carrying capacity of Chautauqua.
So how will you know when you've found a balance? Which is what the memo says.
That is part of the trick, but part of it is looking at trends over time. And, you know, is asking the questions if ridership, you know, if adding a shuttle will really increase the number of people visiting Chautauqua or not, so we can start to look at visitation trends through the data that we have.
Just to add to that, if you said it was out of the scope of camp, I don't know if this question would be answered by you or anyone else. Does anyone have input over whose scope that would fall under?
That would, I mean, that is largely more of an open space specific question rather than this, the camp evaluation is being led by transportation, so it's really focused around how to manage the parking congestion in the Chautauqua area.
Thank you.
So I would suggest either changing the statement at the top of page. This is page three. So that you don't say that you're gonna find a balance between exceeding carrying capacity and providing access to visitors. Or, or actually have a way to know when you will exceed carrying capacity. Because the way it's written now, if you're not planning on doing it, it doesn't make sense to have it there. I mean, I think it's a good idea to do it. But if you're not planning to do it, I wouldn't claim that I was planning to do it.
Francis, you might look at, explain it would be evaluating or exploring the providing access as it relates to carrying capacity, so that you know, there's some clearer understanding of kind of what exactly that's gonna be in the timeframe within which that might be, so it may be longer than a year, or I don't know what the timeframe is necessarily for this particular effort, but I do think it's an important concept, and Chautauqua is a good target area for that. But I think Karen's right, you probably want to spend a little more time kind of sorting out exactly what is going to happen.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I was just gonna add, you know, just documenting everything appropriately, so as anyone is moving forward, you know, any past documents can be helpful as we move forward with the projects, and it doesn't seem like something was there and then it fell off, or, you know, we're not sure what happened. You know, accuracy is always, always a good thing.
Any other questions on the camp memo? Then let's go on to the other two. Are there any questions about the trailheads update memo?
Karen, I have one.
Okay.
And I don't know who to address this specifically, but in the last section, trailhead planting. I certainly support, I think the board supports the planting of native vegetation. The concern I have is prior to this memo, there was conversation about trailhead gardens. And I want to take this opportunity to say that we should be focused on native landscapes and appropriate landscapes at those trailheads, which reflect the native condition of the area, and the word gardens references a more horticultural effort, and I think what we want to focus on is restoring native landscapes. So I would suggest that that be the description of the trailhead plantings rather than having it be more general and kind of less rigorously defined.
Yeah, I can just, Jeff Haley, Deputy Director for Trails and Facilities, I can just chime in and say you're absolutely correct. What we're trying to do or attempting to do is actually look at our trailheads as kind of part of the whole continuum. You go from a very urbanized city, you know, infrastructure, community, to a very native, you know, naturalistic landscape. So those trailheads, what we're seeing is actually a lot of non-native natives being introduced through cars coming in and this and that. So yeah, what we're actually working closely with our ecological staff and restoration staff to identify what those natives should be and remove the non-natives and the invasives to plant the native species.
Right. And kind of Sounds good.
Yeah, actually create a more
The word that got me, yeah, the word that got me going was the use of the word cosmopolitan, which I have never heard of used, that word used in context of native landscaping, but the concern is that there are now several non-native species who are kind of axiomatically considered native, and I'm just concerned that that whole cosmopolitan notion
Something beautiful would be planted
Right.
just for being beautiful as opposed to more native.
Orchard grass, for instance, is one of those. They're smooth grown, isn't it? And so anyway, just be mindful and careful of what goes into those.
Absolutely. Yeah, and our staff have been working with like Megan Bose and Lynn Rita, a variety of staff really make sure we have the right species.
But did I have that right? The big portion of the reason was really to provide a buffer against non-native species coming, species coming in
Correct.
from people, dogs, all of the above?
That's, that's one, yeah, exactly. And there's a variety of reasons, both for aesthetics, but also demonstration to show folks what native species exist. And to kind of, if you have native species planted, then that'll help reduce the amount of non-natives coming in, so.
Yeah, it's a real interpretive opportunity.
That's true, exactly. So, yeah, no gardens, no ornamental statues. Yeah.
Great, thanks.
You are.
Okay. Last information item has to do with the water service line for Boulder Valley Farms.
Karen, I had two quick questions. In the first paragraph, as far as the description of how the water lines would be installed, the narrative says that a trench would be the installation mechanism, but through open cutting. And then it says open cutting would minimize impacts and future maintenance needs versus directional boring, and I'm wondering exactly how open cutting is going to do that.
Yeah, in some situations, boring is preferable, and others we find that the open trench could be more beneficial, and we will explain that point in a memo coming forward of why in this instance, the open trench would be preferable to the boring. So we'll provide that information.
What the two look like, what the difference is.
And the difference, sure, we'd be happy to provide the difference.
Thanks. And then the last paragraph on the first page, there's a sentence that says, open space Mount Park's real estate staff believe this matter should have been resolved prior to acquisition of the property by the city. And so my question is, and I don't know the Bethany's here, is why wasn't it?
Well, I could tell you that this was probably the most complex acquisition that has been done in the last couple of decades in terms of everything that was on the deed and everything that we needed to go. Bethany can chime in. She was the one that was the analyzer for making sure we got as clean of a situation as we could. But Bethany, I don't know if you want to chime in about perhaps why this was a hangover?
Yeah, it's exactly that. There were so many moving parts and so many, you know, there's about eighty some odd exceptions on title on this property, because there's a lot going on, and we did clean up several easements and several access agreements and things like that, or had that done prior to acquisition. And while there were some left-hand easements associated with the old plat and everything, none of them actually reached or extended up to these four residential lots that were part of that original NUPD plat.
So if I could read between the lines, the cleanup should have been, if there was an intention by the previous owners to have that, and it was never formally documented within an easement situation.
Yeah, so everything was owned prior to our acquisition by the same entity really, or the same family, and so they didn't necessarily think to convey a bunch of easements to each other or to residences, and so that was something that did not get conveyed to the, you know, to each other, to those residential lots prior to us taking ownership of the surrounding land.
And my other question, real quickly, is condemnation proceedings, can one public entity do that against another public entity?
It depends on the circumstance. So open space has condemnation authority to condemn for open space in certain situations. Transportation, you've heard of transportation condemnations. The left-hand water district is a special district under state statute. It's, you know, it's questioned, there is case law both saying they might and they don't. And so rather than even questioning that or even litigating whether or not they do, much less a potential condemnation action, this is, you know, the preferred alternative to be able to work with them, because if they do, they if left-hand were to pursue condemnation, they would be able to, they would pursue a much larger water main, so a much larger pipe, much more infrastructure, much more impact. If it was an issue of left-hand pursuing it rather than us working with these private individuals on smaller service lines.
Thanks.
Certainly.
Okay, sounds like we're ready to move on. Any questions or comments about the diversity, equity, and inclusion memo, which is also included in the packet?
And we do have a brief presentation for tonight.
Okay.
And I'll just provide a very brief intro and then turn it over to actually Brenda, who's helping us in many ways tonight. Brenda is a community engagement manager with the city's communication and engagement department. And she is helping to lead an effort with the city manager's office and as well as department staff for departments around the city to look at ways to, from boards and commissions, to enhance their work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we updated council about this effort this fall, and we are now bringing that out to boards, meaning the city collectively, with Brenda's leadership and city manager's leadership. And so tonight, we just want to whet your whistle about future conversations we want to have for this board about how we can become a more welcoming and inclusive environment here at the board level. And we want to come back to you, probably take some time at the retreat to address this issue. We thought that would be a really good format for that, as well as to encourage you all to participate in some trainings that are gonna be offered throughout the year. But with that, I will have Brenda just quickly summarize some of the efforts that are happening with city staff to work with boards and commissions.
Great, thank you so much. I'll just share a little graphic I have that's interesting, and I will apologize for the typo that you'll see on that graphic. But of course, by sharing that, my notes went away, so that's exciting. Now that you've seen it, I'm gonna stop sharing. So we started in March 2022 with a series of six workshops. We invited all of our board and commission project team members, which we consider our secretaries and liaisons. And then a core group of folks that came together to really think about how better to support those staff members who support you all and the other boards and commissions in the city. And we came together and started working with a consulting firm called iProject LLC to create a series of workshops to enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging, which you'll hear called DEI across the city generally. We also talk about JDI, which is justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I know you've heard a lot from OSMP's Jedi team, which was the first at the city. So the word cloud I briefly showed offers a peek at many of the terms that we explored through the process. And our lead consultant Angela Davis, who likes to say she's not the Angela Davis, but she's the one that you know, worked with city staff to host three two-part workshops. So it was a total of 24 hours that staff committed to this training toward the goal of creating a DEI blueprint for boards and commissions going forward. So in looking at our racial equity plan goals, we have a specific goal related to increasing diversity in boards and commissions. It's part of a larger goal about representation across the city, about making sure that people who make and advise decisions at the city are representative of the community in many ways. But we realized that before we started intentional recruitment in communities that had been historically excluded or marginalized, and mostly with those folks who often have a lot of demands on their time and their talent, we really wanted to take an honest look at the climates and cultures of our boards and commissions and support making each space across the city where advisory volunteers like yourselves come together, really work to make those valued and valuable service experiences for community members. The first two sessions focused on inclusion and belonging, leaning into productive atmospheres. As you see those slides, it's a conversation we've been having for many years at the city, but putting this work in context of that conversation, productive atmospheres and psychological safety. So we're looking to create spaces where we can have full-hearted participation, that people can really be their whole selves and show up with all of their perspectives in those rooms. So we walked through the full life cycle of being a board or commission member and talked about how to bring inclusion and belonging into each step. So that meant we looked at recruitment, we looked at onboarding throughout the phases of your five-year terms, and the increasing leadership roles that you might have in those terms, all the way through offboarding later. And then fast forward to July 2022. We spent sessions three and four focused on creating a diversity blueprint for each board and commission. So the workshop participants themselves, the staff that support you and the other boards really looked at their own intersectional identities, the different ways that they might identify themselves, and worked in small groups to understand what qualities candidates could bring to their board and commission rooms that would be an add to the culture. We talked a lot about these different concepts of culture fit, which is often leads one to choose folks who look and have backgrounds and perspectives just like their own, or culture add, which makes more space for different perspectives to come in the room and enrich the experience everyone is having. So we looked at the different strategies that could be used to to determine what might be a culture add in these rooms. And then the final two sessions last September illuminated the past and present of inequities in America, particularly related to political structures and policies that are grounded in the founding of our country and the first folks who came over and came onto this land and settled it in different ways, taking it from some of the folks who lived here originally. The recent pilot process improvements of the Human Relations Commission, which include supporting a primary Spanish-speaking member, are informing current equity needs. And so once we sort of understood that history of where a lot of inequity comes from, we started to talk about what inequities are we learning about within our boards and commissions by starting to have members who have different backgrounds and different needs than other members? And how do we start paving those pathways with resources so that everyone is able to show up in the evening, even if they have kids at home who need to be taken care of, so that everyone can speak in the language of their heart during the meetings? And so that everyone has access to the same knowledge and background about the issues that they're discussing. So we worked to highlight that for everyone on the staffs who were in the workshops, so that they could think about their own boards and and how they might bring some of those practices into play, should they get a new member that needed some of those equity resources. They also worked together in teams. Your staff representatives were Um, they also worked together in teams. Um, your, your staff representatives were Leah and Lauren, and they worked closely mostly with our folks in Parks and Rec um to start to develop plans of action that they might um consider bringing to you at a future time. And I know that that's a continuing conversation that goes on. Um, we know that in addition to those pilot programs that we talked about with the Human Relations Commission, other innovations have already started to be implemented. Um, I helped the landmarks board create some group agreements that really helped um make them aware of some behaviors that were happening between board members and and with the community members who were participating in their board to help mitigate some of those behaviors and make more of a welcoming space. Um, we also have heard from our Parks and Rec Advisory Board that they were very intentional as they onboarded in March um to really make sure that they made space for introductions, that they were giving room for the the members to get to know each other as people, um instead of just starting the meeting, conducting the meeting and ending the meeting. They're creating some ways for people to humanize each other and get to know each other so that they um have more connection and are better able to listen and converse when the conversation gets a little tougher. Um, and we know and we heard from the staff and um and those who work with boards and commissioners across the city that we need to bring you into this work too. Um, so we have decided that we would love to start this year with having each of you attend a session that is our in-house training called Advancing Racial Equity, The Role of Government. This is a training that is currently mandatory for our supervisors and managers at the city and directors. Um, and is, is highly encouraged for everyone to take on staff. But we want to make sure that you all are able to fully step into these commitments of the city and your identity as a city advisor and volunteer, um and understand where um our language around this work is coming from and our commitments toward advancing racial equity. So we will be, um, I think it was in your memo, some, some initial ideas about times that we might be able to partner you with some other boards um to take that training. Um, we'll also have some sign-ups sheets where on a date where board members from any board and commission can sign up. So Leah will follow up with you, I'm sure, in the future um to check with you about what options might work best for you. We're looking at May and June for those trainings and really hoping to get all board and commission members through that training this year. It's a two-and-a-half-hour training um that's an hour, it's two-and-a-half-hour training with an hour video that you watch on your own beforehand, um and then you come into the room for the two-and-a-half-hour discussion. So it's not too much time to really understand um where the city is making some commitments these days. So um with that, I'll open to some questions. Um, I know that was kind of a lot and kind of um all over the place. So I am happy to circle back on any of the things that I've shared.
I, I think it was really good. I don't think it was all over the place at all. Um, lighter comment, you know, if we just bring the food, the people will come, right? Just having um at a restaurant. But no, I think that was very clear and very concise and those opportunities are extremely valuable and important for our community as a whole. And um I appreciate everything that you have done and are doing with that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks Brenda. As the um one person of color on this board, I have a series of questions for you.
Absolutely.
I, I think you did cover quite a lot and um the work that you're all doing is amazing and I'm super happy that you're doing that. Um, some questions, uh you mentioned equity resources. Are those um centered around language barriers? Or are there other equity resources that are being considered?
Yeah, thank you. Um, the, the first and foremost was language barrier because um Carlos Valdez, who is now the vice chair of the Human Relations Commission, is a primary Spanish speaker. His English is quite good, but he really does want to be able to fully express himself in the meetings. And so they do now resource every single meeting with an interpreter, um actually with a team of two interpreters because we've learned that if it's longer than an hour, um it's really helpful for our interpreters to be able to take a break and be able to refresh their brain a little bit doing that difficult work. So a team of two interpreters joins every Human Relations Commission meeting to make sure that the information flows smoothly back and forth between both languages. Um, but also we've looked at other opportunities to um to create equity. You know, that not everyone in our
Hang on just one second, we lost sound.
I can hear you Brenda.
Need to get like a red sheet of paper.
I can hear you Brenda. Um, you're about to, just hold that flat where you, I think they lost you.
Yeah.
My professional advice.
No, but let's take off.
Yeah.
That's what you always say, plug and unplug.
And we should speak every once in a while? No.
Yeah, I guess they can't hear me either.
Turn it off and on again, right? That's the first high-dollar advice. Okay. John used to be at the IT help desk, everybody.
Okay, we're back.
We're back. Can we hear?
Can you hear me?
We have John, our IT expert.
I can't, we can't see the room anymore. There we go. Now I see Leah.
Well, that's not ideal.
I'll just say test, test every once in a while. See if you can hear me. All right. Um, so I was start, I was sharing that um that while we are supporting language access, um there's also a lot of conversations about other support. I know that Parks and Rec um is supporting childcare for one of their members. Um, because it was not possible for her to attend meetings um either at home or in person um without some childcare support. So um they have come up with some ways to support that childcare for her. Um, and other questions have come up. Um, you know, we continue to, to ruminate on the idea of stipends for community members who do not have the free hours to give to this sort of effort when they could be hours that they're making money. Um, you know, a lot of people are, are right on that edge and and just can't afford the level of volunteer um hours that it takes to, to be an advisor at the city.
Um, so how are they, how was Prab able to support childcare without rolling that out to the other boards and commissions?
Um, it was a concern that was brought forward by that member, um and so they addressed it for that member. Um, but that's a great question, Michelle. We should be rolling those things up to a centralized part. So and and that's a great point. Part of what, where we've started with this work and why it was important to try and bring as many staff in the room together for these trainings as possible is that we, unlike some other cities, don't have a unified department that sort of cares for boards and commissions as a whole. Our clerk's office does a lot of the logistics as far as getting folks recruit, recruiting and appointing. But each board and commission really runs itself in a pretty decentralized kind of way. Um, and so we don't have a structure in place to, to have that roll up to a centralized structure and then roll back out to everyone else. Um, you know, Denver, which has like sixty-plus boards and commissions, um they have an office that is the Office of Boards and Commissions and a manager in that office and some staff that, that really support consistency across that structure and and we don't have that in Boulder. So this is also sort of a way for us to think more globally across the organization about how we do work.
Yeah, thank you. And, and you know, that idea that, that, that um Parks and Rec is supporting that person because that person asked is a, you know, a sign right there of inequities within the city. Um, because those who ask, there are, for that person who asked, there are probably two, three, ten X of those people who are unwilling to ask. And so um
Great point.
You know, the, the idea is that you would offer this to everybody and then the, then people would have the ability to turn it down rather than the other way around and asking for it because um that has the power imbalance, right? Um, when, when you put people in that particular situation. In, in also in this process, Brenda, are they considering or are you all considering the number of meetings and the length of meetings um and the participation that's required? For unpaid work?
For, yeah, so I will share that um the end of, so that presentation to council, which I think you have a link um to that whole memo to council in your memo this week. Um, there were quite a few different topics that were addressed with boards and commissions um during that presentation. Um, this being one of them, some logistics and some ideas about um the next appointment cycle, which we're in the midst of right now. Um, and some other subjects were addressed there. So I think you have that in your memo. And the last thing that we talked about at that presentation was hiring a consultant to really do a top-to-bottom assessment of um our boards and commissions' structure. And that is definitely one of the questions that we as a um core guiding team to this work have brought forward. Um, also, five-year terms can be really challenging for people. Um, particularly as people start to, to be more mobile and how they live their lives um and don't necessarily know that they'll be in one place for five years. Um, and yet their voices are still valuable in advising the decisions at the city. And so we're not in a place yet where we've been able to holistically look at that, but part of the work plan this year um that council supported is to hire a consultant to help us dig in and ask those hard questions and and start to chart a different future going forward.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see what those metrics are, um like the number of hours per board and kind of um um but, but up against the census of those applicants. What those applicants look like um and um based on those particular metrics and those commitments.
Yeah, and I think as part of that full assessment, there are ques- there's conversations to be had with current board and commission members like yourselves. There's conversations, more conversations to be had with staff, and we really do want to talk with folks who have chosen not to apply and talk up to them. And we've done some of that, but doing more of that is what is keeping you from being able to step in and into these rooms and serve in this way, or even put your name forward to do that. And then we also work with Campbell because we know they're the, ultimately, they're the decision-maker about who sits on boards and commissions. Um, and so staff can do a lot of work and you all can do a lot of work and council chooses what these boards and commissions, who, who makes them up, right? And so we need to bring them solidly into this conversation too.
No, I'm so glad you're doing that work. Um, the, and, and we're going to see this in this next cycle is that I mean, the, the, the women I've talked to when tried to get to apply to various boards, first question is, what is the commitment? And like, can I do this um based on, on their um family obligations? Um, okay, uh, the, the, the training that you have, is it mandatory? Is it, I know it is for staff, but for the board members, is it going to be mandatory?
Uh, you know, it's hard to make things mandatory for volunteers. Um, it is as mandatory as we feel we can make it, which is that we express to all of you our um, our desire that you be there and the importance of bringing you into this commitment that the city has made. Um, and so that means that we might bug you over and over and over until you make that choice to attend one of these trainings because we think it's very, very important that you come um and you're volunteers. And that's why we've tried to make it so that part of the work you do on your own, on your own time, um the hour-long video, and then it's a two-and-a-half-hour discussion that we have together. And we're talking with each board and commission to figure out the most convenient way to do that for you and get you the experience you want to have. You know, there's doing it together is one experience. Doing it alongside other boards and commissions is an experience and each sort of signing up for a training that has many different boards and commissions represented is another experience, right? And we want you to have the experience you want in this and we want to support it in the way you want to have it. So, so we really are trying to create options for you to have.
Great. Appreciate that. This is my last comment and um I see that the two dates are um are Monday nights.
Those are two possible dates that Yeah, there's other, other times we can offer for you as well.
Yeah, my, my one request would be to offer a diversity of evenings or a differ- diversity of days in, in the week.
Sure. Yeah, we just pulled those two because we know that we're already standing up training dates for two other boards on each of those days together. Um, so we could add you to one of those that we're already in the works to plan. Um, but again, we can continue to have that conversation. You know, as far as Wednesdays go, I know the landmarks board is very interested in taking it alongside another board, but on a night that they might normally meet. So they also meet, they meet first Wednesdays. So maybe between the two boards, we could come to some consensus about first Wednesday or second Wednesday um and get you in on a night that you're used to meeting. Um, so Leah will follow up with you all, I'm sure, and, and have that conversation in a more concerted and collaborative way. Um, but please know that we want you to take this training and so we want to find ways to, to get this training in front of you.
Um, I just wanted to add something, I'm not interrupting anyone else. Um, Michelle, with one of the comments that you made, it made sense, but I was um reading a business journal the other day and it had a really interesting um and excellent article about the success of FedEx and how that company was able um to overcome whatever its obstacles were um to turn into the business that it did. And, and it talked about its plan and strategy. And what I'm referring to is the singular board that was able to provide childcare for just the one person. Um, and I hear what you're saying when you said that there's a lot of people out there that would love to have that ask and they don't have the opportunity to. But the article that was discussing the success of FedEx said that a huge portion of the success of that company was each individual employee was really on their own with their check of mail. So when you're in Chicago and the planes are down and there's a big snowstorm and it's windy and you can't drive that way, you can't drive that way and you cannot fly, it is up to each individual person to then figure out how to take, you know, like their Santa stack of mail and get to where they need to go. And that method was um the lifeblood of the company because instead of trying to make everyone that's stuck in Chicago move, they allowed each person to figure out their own way. And with that strategy, um they were able to grow and, you know.
So Caroline, I think we could take this debate offline or, or outside of this board meeting. I think the idea of providing an equitable environment and community is that we offer things to other people. We don't force people to fend for themselves. That is not a supportive community when we say, hey, you go, you go uh fend for yourself.
Well, I think it's the opposite of that. And it, it really wasn't directed at just you. The, the comment was for the entire group in that sometimes the smaller circles have the ability to do more. And by that, that person was able to then still attend the board meeting. So it might be a small success, but it still was a success.
Is it, and I'm, I applaud that person for speaking up and I applaud that department for making that happen. I encourage the city to roll that out in a more equitable way.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I hear what you're both saying and I think ideally, we would love to empower everyone to a point where they feel like they have the voice to step forward and ask for the things they need. And that's not um what our community looks like today. So um, so we do need to do a chunk of work just to invite everyone to have their voice and to ask for their needs. And we start by doing what Michelle said, which is making them not have to ask, right? And so I really appreciate that comment and, and we'll take that back to the core team, which is primarily the clerk's office with um with Amy Kane from our racial equity. Um, she's our racial equity program manager and, and a couple others of us at the city. And, and we will have that conversation, Michelle. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenda.
All right. Uh, thanks Brenda. Thanks Leah. Thanks Lauren for supporting the separate and, or conversations to come. Um, with that, Karen, I think we're ready to move to uh our next item, which is the continuation With that, Karen, I think we're ready to move to uh our next item, which is the continuation of uh the consideration of a staff recommendation to the open space board of trustees and allowing e-biking as a passive recreational passive recreational use on open space trails, e-bikes and open space. Uh, just a reminder before I turn it over to Marnie, uh, we had a robust uh conversation in November, uh, uh, December, which included a public hearing. And now we're back today to help support in ways that we can the board's deliberation and discussion on this matter. So with that, Marnie Ratzl, our principal planner.
Sorry, I did that unmute. Good evening. Give me a moment to put myself um myself successful here. Uh, good evening, trustees. I'm Marnie Ratzl, principal planner and the project manager for this effort. Um, let's see if I can get myself out of this screen. Does that just say there you go?
Oh, I can move that.
Okay. Okay, so this item, um, as Dan said, is a continuation from your December meeting. Uh, and it's in consideration about whether to amend the current policy that prohibits e-bikes on OSMP managed trails and um and require, oh, I'm sorry. I was distracted by that. Okay, um, it's about whether to amend the current policy that prohibits e-biking on open space managed trails and requires disposal of open space land to allow e-bike. In December, we presented a final um staff recommendation to the board, uh, which is comprised of two components. The first is a recommendation to allow class one and class two e-biking as a passive recreational use and allowed only on trails designated for e-biking. And the second is to designate and manage e-biking on trails identified in alternative B. These include Plains Trails that allow biking and the Boulder Canyon Trail. So before uh the board deliberations this evening, I'm going to provide a little refresher on the planning process. And then I'm going to turn it over to Casey French, who will step through the approach of the staff recommendation and why the department supports this approach for allowing e-bikes on open space. And then we'll wrap it up with some next steps. OSMP's evaluation of e-bikes began about a year ago in the spring of 2022. It included an engagement window over the summer and additional analysis in the fall. In December, the community also had an opportunity to provide input to the board on a final staff recommendation during a public hearing. The purpose of tonight is for the trustees to make a recommendation to city council for their consideration this spring. Uh, I'm gonna now um cover some of the highlights from each phase of the process. OSMP completed an activity assessment using the process outlined in the visitor master plan and the set of considerations detailed on the left side of your slide. Uh, staff determined that e-biking does not differ from biking and could be managed similarly to biking activity, which allows it on designated trails. As such, we identified three management alternatives to the status quo of not allowing e-bikes. And next, we evaluated these management alternatives and the status quo against one another. This informed the selection of alternative B as the alternative with the most advantages. Staff identified alternative B as the preferred alternative because it provides a consistent visitor experience and regulations on interconnected trails, which are easy to understand, comply with, and enforce. It also increases opportunities for visitors and more of more ages and abilities to access and enjoy our open space to climate city goal, to city climate goals with minimal impacts to natural resources, visitor experience, visitor safety, and the trail system. Next, during the summer, we gathered community input on whether to allow e-biking on trails, and if so, where? Um, we did that through an online engagement and an onsite intercept survey. And overall, a majority of respondents support e-biking on open space trails over the status quo of not allowing e-bikes. The online engagement indicated support for the preliminary staff proposal of alternative B. And the preferences of open space visitors that responded to the intercept survey were more evenly distributed uh between the three alternatives, sorry. But this slide presents the inputs into the final recommendation. Uh, in addition to public input uh and the evaluation criteria, we also considered peer agency experience and the department's experience with biking to develop a recommendation that was presented in the fall. So in the fall, uh, the board requested additional information to support their consideration of final recommendation. Some of these items included demographic comparison of surveys and census data. More information on existing and proposed enforcement activity if e-biking was allowed. Uh, and a comparison of visitation on interconnected trails between OSMP and our agency partners. Most of the information was provided in your December packet, although some requests did require some more time and are included in your February packet, such as this map depicting widths of trails that allow, that allow bikes. So tonight, staff requests the board consider these two separate components in the form of a motion. First, to recommend the Boulder City Council allow class one and class two e-bikes as a passive recreational use on open space. And to recommend to the open and two, to recommend to the open space board of, uh, the open space department um that we proceed with a staff preferred alternative of alternative B. Uh, the Plains Trails located east of Broadway and the Boulder Canyon Trail. Uh, I'm now going to step, uh, turn it over to Casey, who's going to share more about why the department supports this approach for a staff recommendation.
Thanks, Marnie. So the purpose of organizing the staff recommendation into two parts like this is to separate the policy decision uh that requires council approval from on-the-ground management actions that do not. Um, another reason for this approach is that guidance on policy is is generally more static in nature. While implementing the policy, in this case, the trails for designating e-bike is often more dynamic, and it might benefit some of the ability to more easily adaptively manage. So in this next part of the presentation, I'm going to go step by step uh through the staff recommended process or the recommendation on how. So there are four recommended steps related to changing the policy in order to allow e-biking, which includes a legislative finding, appealing and replacing the ordinance, and identifying the rulemaking process as the tool for implementation. And then there's only one step, which is making the city manager rule identifying the trails um in order to implement the policy. Again, I'm going to go through these in more detail on the next slides. In order to explain the intention of the legislating finding, I'm going to start with some background on the charter. So Charter section 176 states that open space land shall be used only for certain purposes, and one of those purposes is passive recreation. Uh, the charter does not mention or allow for exceptions to those uses, nor does it define passive recreation. Passive recreation is defined in the visitor master plan, and it defines it as non-motorized activities that achieve the criteria that's listed here on this slide. And we recognize there's debate on whether e-bikes meets the non-motorized component. Um, so in support of the staff finding that e-biking meets this other criteria, council could make a legislative finding that e-biking is a passive recreational activity allowed on open space trails. The intention of the legislative finding is for council to specifically find that e-biking is a passive recreational use of open space. Um, and then it aligns with our policies, meaning it, it meets the criteria identified in the visitor master plan. And the benefit of this approach is that it explicitly draws the connection between allowing e-biking to the charter and the district visitor master plan, which defines passive recreation. Um, in the additional information recently requested by the board, um, it was asked if other ordinance changes alone can allow e-biking without a legislative finding, and and the answer is yes. Uh, with, without the legislative finding, though, um, we're authorizing an activity in open space without describing um just how it relates to our policies guiding allowed activities. Uh, moving on to step two, which is the recommendation to repeal ordinance 7525. Uh, this ordinance prohibits e-bikes and requires disposal of open space. And so therefore, it must either be repealed or amended uh to support the policy change of allowing e-bike on open space, e-biking on open space. Um, the recommended approach is to repeal and replace uh instead of amending. Um, because as indicated by the, the seven, the current ordinance is located in chapter seven. Um, and this is the traffic code section of the VRC. Um, all other open space related ordinances are in chapter eight. Um, and that chapter is focused specifically on open space management. So the current location is is a one-off, and uh we just think it warrants relocation to chapter eight for consistency. So uh with replacing the ordinance, as I mentioned, we are re- we are recommending a new ordinance in chapter eight. Um, and this new ordinance contains the actual legislative finding. Um, it allows e-bikes on certain designated trails and contains the language establishing the city manager rule as the tool for designation. Um, and there are also some other changes needed to define and regulate e-biking. And all of these um ordinance changes were in your packet and detailed in attachment A. And um I will go into more detail on the city manager rule as the tool for implementation here in just a moment. Uh, but first, I wanted to respond to another recent board inquiry around the potential ways, other ways to make the ordinance changes. Um, the ordinance could be changed or created to prohibit e-biking except where designated, which is similar to the regulations for biking, uh, fishing and sledding, which are all located in chapter eight. Um, however, the difference here is that with these activities meet the VMP definition of passive recreation. While again, it can be debated that e-biking does not. So hence, a recommended ordinance changes, which include council making a legislative finding that e-bike is a passive recreational use. Um, moving on to the rulemaking as the tool for designating the trails. Uh, the rulemaking process is outlined in chapter one dash four of the VRC. And uh in that process, staff first identifies the trails for e-biking. Uh, staff then proposes the rule to the city manager. And um if the city manager supports OSMP staff designation, uh, the manager adopts the rule. Uh, the rulemaking process also contains um a requirement to publish the proposed rule. So publish the draft rule and consider public comments before the rule or amendments become final. Um, we thought that was a benefit of the rulemaking process um as this requirement just provides those assurances to the community of transparency and the ability to provide input. Um, and again, however, uh, to answer Board's recent question of whether that's necessary, no, it is not necessary to use rulemaking as the tool for designation. Um, these duties are already delegated to the OSMP department in Charter section 171, uh, functions of the department A and B. Um, but with this methodology, there's just no process requirement. Um, however, that said, there's, of course, a longstanding departmental practice of seeking board and public input on trail decisions, and we would intend to continue that uh this, that practice if the tool for designating resided uh within the functions of the department instead of rulemaking authority. Um, so that concludes my section of the presentation describing the approach or the how um to make the policy changes and implement that policy um that are associated with the motion shown here on the slide. So I will turn it back over to Marnie now.
Thanks, Casey. Uh, so, so, so to support the board discussion and deliberation, um, we have several staff members available to answer any questions you might have. And we're also prepared to share materials, including the digital map um of the trail widths that was included in your packet, as well as the map that was included in your December packet. Um, that, that map shows connection points and ownership of OSMP trails um that are interconnected with trails managed by our agency partners. Uh, capping this off, the next step in the process is for the Boulder City Council to consider this issue, which is anticipated to go before them this spring. And that concludes our presentation, and I'll turn it over to Karen.
Thank you very much. Um, and, and thanks for getting all those maps queued up and ready to go so that we can refer to them. Um, rather than start with the maps, I'd like to start with the question of e-bikes um meeting the definition of passive recreation in the charter.
Karen, may, may I step in just one second before we get into the substance of this uh deliberation? I'd just like to cover a little bit of business. Is that okay?
Um, so where, where do you think we need to be headed?
Um, I'm, I just want to make sure I am understanding the process that the people in the room, um, your room and the virtual room are in fact deliberating on this particular topic. The reason why I asked this question and I, um, it's just unclear to me based on the beginning part of our November meeting in which we discussed e-bikes and December where I wasn't, I wasn't in attendance. Um, there was some, like, some long conversations and comments made that led me to believe that not all of our trustees would be deliberating on this topic. And I just wonder if that's actually the case, my understanding, if there's any sort of clarification.
I think the four of us here in the room are ready to deliberate. I, I guess.
Can you elaborate?
For me, the only question is whether you're joining us or not.
No, I, I am definitely joining and deliberating. I, the beginning of that meeting, there was uh some comments that were made by you, Caroline, about um and I didn't quite understand what was being said. And I realize I'm, I, I was on the other side of the screen, but I was led to believe that you had some conflicts with presentations and would not be deliberating on the e-bike con- a topic? Is my understanding completely off? And if you could enlighten me, I'd love to hear what that was about.
Well, I don't want to speak for the chair, but I think at this time, at this February meeting, we should probably stay on track with what this deliberation is about and not go back to that meeting.
So that meeting was not about e-biking. It was about something totally, something totally different.
And that's what you want to discuss now?
Yeah, I mean, were you saying that you were going to recuse yourself from the e-bike conversation, or were you not?
Like I said, I think, I don't want to speak for the chair.
No, speak for yourself, please.
But I think where you're going for the February meeting, where we're having a conversation about e-bikes, I, I just, I'm not sure where you're going or why you're doing it, and I I don't think it's going to be productive for tonight.
Yeah, the reason why I'm doing, because you made a comment earlier about how documentation was really important, and I think there's just a disconnect definitely in my mind and probably through uh with others in the community about what happened between November and February that uh changed, I think, that um made you decide that you did not need to recuse yourself from this topic.
I, what I hear uh Caroline saying is that she's ready to deliberate on the questions that are before us now regarding e-bikes. And if you're ready to participate in that, too, I think we ought to proceed.
I am totally ready.
Okay, and what I'd like to do is start with the question, as staff has presented, there's more than one question here. And do is start with the question of, of whether e-bikes are allowed under the charter. And um I have spent time going, using the memo that Marnie sent to us, I believe it was in December, with the links to all the previous OSBT considerations of this question from 2013 through 2018. And take just a few minutes to review previous motions from OSBT on this topic. So we also have that as context for our current board discussion. And um Leah, if you'll put up the photo that I sent to you, I'd like to start there. Um, because in, in Um, because in, in twenty thirteen. And twenty fourteen, the city made decisions to allow e-bikes on all. Hard-surfaced, multi-use trails and paths in the city. Um, that were greenways, that were these kinds of trails shown in the photo, which is taken from the city website. And um, and that started this discussion of where do e-bikes belong? And city council passed. Um, provisions that said e-bikes are allowed on these kinds of hard surface. Paved, multi-use trails throughout the city. And the website now says that uh there are about three hundred miles of these kinds of bikeway. Trails um which include these multi-use trails. Uh, greenway trails as well, well as other sorts of bikeways throughout the city. So we have firmly established in the city. That e-bikes are allowed in the city limits on all these kinds of of hard surface trails. It was in that context that O S B T. And thanks, Lee, I don't think we need the, the photo anymore. Um, that O S B T took up the question of do e-bikes belong on open space trails? And in twenty thirteen, Tom Isaacson moved and Shelley Dunbar seconded. A motion that said that the Open Space Board of Trustees finds. The use of e-bikes on open space paved paths is not appropriate under the charter. However, uh they recommended that staff, O S B T sta- O S M P staff. Begin investigating a possible disposal. Of identified paved, multi-use paths on open space and mountain parks land. That principally serve a transportation function. And that motion passed four to one with two parts to it. Um, then in twenty fourteen, a year later. Um, the board. Move to. To make the following statement to city council, and I'm quoting. The board maintains that conveying or otherwise transferring management responsibilities for any parcel of open space land. Including those containing paved, multi-use paths to any other department of the city. Constitutes a disposal of open space land, which is shut, subject to all applicable city charter provisions. And that motion was passed unanimously. So at this point, O S B T had determined. That that e-bikes were not appropriate on open space land under the charter. That if the, the land was conveyed or transferred to another department in the city. That it would need to be disposed of. And then the next motion that O S B T passed also in twenty fourteen. Was to approve the disposal of land consisting of parcels identified. Um, in eleven small, non-contiguous paved parcels. Which primarily serve a non-open space purpose of transportation. To the city's Public Works Department, which is where the Transportation Department falls. And that um, there would be no cost involved in this. Transfer or disposal. Um, and that, that there would be cost savings because the O S M P would no longer manage and maintain those trails. That motion was passed three to two, that disposal motion. For the eleven small, non-contiguous paved parcels. And the classic paved parcel that was considered at this point. Um, is the, the cement trail in front of mist. And other small segments of, of the open space trails like that. In twenty sixteen, staff brought back to O S B T a list of about twenty. Trails, they decided they wanted to expand the number of trail segments that were disposed. And after a long discussion, which I listened to the other day. The Open Space Board concluded that that was too much, that they did not want to expand beyond the eleven small contiguous paved. Segments. Um, at that time, trails like bobbling trail were included. And O S B T said, no, that's too much. We do not want to dispose of things like the bobbling trail that are part of the uh. Open space and mountain park system. And furthermore, we do not want to have an eighteen-inch buffer. Or boundary on the sides of these trails turned over to transportation for maintenance. We only want transportation to maintain the trails themselves. In these eleven non-contiguous um small parcels. And so at that point, um. Staff and O S B T agreed. That they would stick with the eleven small, non-contiguous paved parcels that were agreed to back in twenty fourteen. And that they would develop an I G A or an I D A, I guess it is. With the Transportation Department for the maintenance of those paved trails. Then in twenty eighteen, there was a summary. Um, document presented by staff to O S B T, which again said. That, um. E-bikes would be prohibited on O S M P lands. And that, that decision stems from the city charter. And biking, e-biking is a motorized activity. And it's not considered passive recreation or consistent with the definition of passive recreation. Um. So I. I think that grounding is important for where we are now. This is not the first time that O S B T has considered this decision. Um, but it's clear that we need to make a decision. Again, tonight about this question of does e-biking. Constitute a passive recreation use of open space and mountain parks land.
Well, those are good points to make for, you know, a legislative finding because by doing that, you look at the history and see. Um, you know, what has, has been there in the past. Um, is there anything with any other departments that would be relevant to this or twenty thirteen and? Anything going on that was outside of O S B T that we would need to know about that anyone? Nothing like major happening with e-bikes and, and transportation or something like that that we wouldn't know of because we're only looking at our minutes?
Sure, there's the Colorado change in, in the um. Twenty eighteen Colorado, and then there was uh after that Colorado state change. Then local, other local jurisdictions made changes in how they view e-bikes. And to the point where Boulder County allows e-bikes on a good portion of their plains trails. Jefferson County has since filed suit with that too. So those are uh three major changes that have been made since the twenty eighteen decision.
And what, can you just refresh me or just that we say it out loud in the meeting, what Colorado did for the twenty eighteen?
Sure, yeah, so uh, oh, let me turn my.
This, this staff memo that I'm referring to from twenty eighteen to the board. Uh, did address that because the state uh measure was just passed. And it says the recent state regulatory changes have in particular created a need for agencies. Who had not already addressed e-bikes to do so. As the regulation now allows municipalities on. Uh, I'm sorry, now allows e-bikes on trails unless they are not allowed by local regulation.
Okay.
So the state said, the locality needs to decide whether in fact they are or not allowed.
That's correct, and it changed the classification of um e-bikes from uh being classified as a motor vehicle. To um to not be blessed by this motor vehicle. So the, the um. A lot of the history that you described was prior to or pre that twenty eighteen.
Correct.
State decision. Um, and as Dan said, um. Other municipalities or other uh land manager agencies um have made changes. Um, and we've presented that as part of our research and part of our evaluation of bringing this forward. I think the other thing, especially in looking at the um photo, the evolution of e-bikes. Um, is, has changed the conversation as well. Um, I think when the issue was brought in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, it really was a transportation. Um, issue and focused on uh urban mobility. Um, more recently, there is interest um as well as uh. A desire expressed by community members um to continue to use their open space or our open space. Um, by using e-bikes, they used to use regular bikes, they're shifting to e-bikes. And they um request that access. So that was another reason why we thought it was time to bring this issue forward. Um, and we've provided a lot of information um in the materials over the past several months. Um, part of that was what the existing policy is and that guidance both in the charter and the visitor master plan. Some of which we covered tonight, but we can certainly continue to um answer questions on that.
So there are two fundamental questions in my mind. One that Karen has already articulated, which is our. E-bikes, electric motor assisted bikes uh considered passive recreation. The other, and I think more fundamental question is uh the role of the charter. And whether in fact staff or council under a legislative finding can change the language in the charter. And I think uh that in fact is one of the things that we need to discuss as a board this evening. That uh the charter language does not identify e-bikes nor uh motorized activity. And I think uh from my perspective, that that's uh the fundamental question. Who gets to change the language of the charter?
Can I ask how those things are, can, those documents are connected? Because we talk about the charter as the constitution of, of city of Boulder, open space. Um, which, um, I, I think you, you emailed this back out, says. Here's the allowed uses of open space, passive recreation, including bicycles. Um, yet, yet passive recreation is not defined. This is my understanding. I'm no lawyer, so I think Janet Michaels is on here. Um, and, and the visitor master plan is what goes as far as saying. Um, no, no motorized vehicles. That, I think that's my understanding. And I think that's correct. Uh, it is my understanding, but I think that's correct. So we have the charter and then we have this, what I think is a policy document that interprets the charter. And, and um, and if I understand that order, we're not asking to change the charter. We're asking to change the policy slash interpretation. Is that, is that what you're asking for, Marnie?
Yes, it is.
Not, not a charter change because a charter change is, I agree, is a massive, um, you know, uh lift. Um, but the charter doesn't say e-bikes are not an allowed use. The charter says passive recreation is a, an allowed use. It's the visitor master plan that goes as far as to spell out non-motorized vehicles. So we keep saying that we're changing the charter, but I, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding that.
Well, then I, Michelle, I think that hopefully the conversation this evening will uh elucidate that. So that you can either understand it or, or, or not. From my perspective, uh, the intent of the language in the charter was always non-motorized. Human-powered recreation.
Passive.
And, and uh, yeah, the, I think the word passive certainly uh constitutes that. And so for me, uh, if, if we look at motorbikes as an extension of bicycles. Then uh that does require a charter change that, that is not a policy decision. Because of the, of the element of motorization. And, and yeah, the, the back historically, it may have only been gas-powered motors at that time that were considered. But um electric-powered motors are equal and, you know, any mechanical motor assistance. Uh, I think is not certainly in the spirit or the intent of the charter. Having said that, I think there is a discussion though about um. What we can do moving forward and uh my feeling is, is that the prohibition remains. But that um, w- we do more specifically define. Uh, the role of exceptions, and I do disagree with uh with the staff's um. Uh, analysis of exceptions in the ordinance, which is the legislative. Uh, policy making this, or implementation of the charter language. Uh, the exceptions, there are exceptions for fishing, which is identified in the charter. Um, there are exceptions for sledding, which now is identified in the charter. And so there are all sorts of exceptions uh in city ordinances related to open space management. And so we as a board this evening could uh consider. Uh, that as well if we, if we want to move in that direction.
And we are just clarifying that there is no ex- the exception clause is not within the charter. It does reside within the Boulder revise code, but again, just separating the charter discussion versus the B R C discussion. But that was the clarification.
Code, the ordinance, ordinances guide the implementation of the policies in the charter. And so if the ordinance makes an exception, then it acknowledges that. That is not a function of uh as it was identified in the charter.
So I always want to say that I'm extremely literal, so I read the bullet points over and over again. Um, and you know, I just, you know, I, I take away that the, the visitor master plan is what has. Taken that interpretation of passive recreation. That visitor master plan is now. Excuse me, is that right? Is it, is it eighteen years old? And is it, when was that? We, we originally did that.
It was approved by council in two thousand and five, but let me just clarify a, a word that you use since we're.
Yeah, sure.
Inevitably getting the words this evening.
Yeah.
But what it says in the visitor master plan is passu- passive recreation is defined. As non-motorized activities.
Agreed, I'm, I'm with you there.
So it's a definition, it's not an interpretation, it's a definition.
It's a, the document interprets what the charter says. And defines what passive recreation is. So this document um is now, how old? Eighteen?
Two thousand and five.
A- and so, w- when we originally did the V M P, um, when did we say we were going to update that?
Years.
Often did we say we were going to? We updated every five years. So uh, language in the visitor master plan uh indicates that it would be updated every five years. Um.
So Michelle, my response to that is age is irrelevant to the document. The U S Constitution is two hundred and forty years old. Uh, and it's still the law of the land. The Magna Carta is uh.
Sure, I mean, the Supreme Court interprets.
It still is the foundation for the Brit- British.
Absolutely, and the Supreme Court is charged with interpretat- interpreting that on a regular basis.
And so we, we as the board is at, are, we as the board uh is charged with interpreting. The uh charter language as well.
Yes, my interpretation of the charter language is that it is defining. It is saying passive recreation, what, what uses are acceptable on open space. And so that's, when, when we keep saying that we're, we're changing the charter language, I, th- that is not how this computes in my head. Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm being very literal here. So when we, you know, when we take this visitor master plan that is now. Like thirteen years past being updated. Um, what has changed in thirteen years? In theory, um, could the, and this is. In theory, could the, and this is in theory, could the definition baked within the visitor master plan have changed to include something like e-bikes?
Well, it's, it's cited again in the, in the master plan that was just approved three years ago.
The, the VMP was cited in, in the master plan.
The definition of passive recreation.
The definition of passive recreation in both documents are, are department approved or apartment created and approved by council or adopted because it will change a little bit. Which is why in looking at the research or in researching and taking a look at the charter, taking a look at the policy documents, council, it rests with council and they can make a legislative finding. So again, we're before you tonight to, with the research and the information that we've heard from our community members and from our partners who have been, who have allowed e-bikes for the past several years now, for three, four, five years, to, to focus our efforts tonight on, on, on the recommendations before you. So I, I, I am, I'd like to continue the conversation, but I also feel like we've, we've presented this a couple of times. And I'm, I think you know what, what we've shared and our interpretation. And I think we understand where you're coming from. So.
I guess the board's responsibility and role to, to review and consider and present a recommendation to council.
Absolutely.
It's not the staff's role to do that. And so that is what we are doing.
But what I think with the legislative finding, you know, you go back through legislative history and we're talking about open space right now. And it appears that the history of open space has stayed steadfast within wanting passive recreation to be non-motorized. So when Karen went back through and did all the research to make a legislative finding, Colorado did different in 2018. But as far as within OSBT, OSMP, these findings show to me, I mean, obviously someone else can have an opinion, but it seems like it's, it's non-wavering that passive recreation is non-motorized. But if someone else heard something different, please.
I, I would agree with that statement, Caroline. But, and let me read one other sentence from this 2018 staff memo. But just a sec, John, that, that is counter to or adds to what you just said. It says Boulder County open space, parks and open space recommendations includes allowing e-bikes on the Longmont to Boulder Lobo Trail, which we all know. Although this trail is interconnected with OSMP lands slash trails, there are alternative routes along the way e-bikers can take to avoid traveling on OSMP lands. So in 2018, staff was stating that, that the county had agreed that a connection to OSMP trails was not essential, that the connection could be made along alternative routes.
I can speak to that because I have, I wrote that. One of the reasons why was, um, the, you know, the county was trying to allow e-bikes, you know, on, on their plains trails and Lobo was their highest ask. Like Lobo was the trail that they want, like that was very, very important. And there were alternative ways. And so we had, they had agreed to take off, you know, all the trails in the south, you know, because they were interconnected, because those, those lead directly onto our, our system. There's no, there's absolutely no other way, right? And, and Boulder Canyon, same thing, there's absolutely no other way. And we were trying to honor where Boulder County wanted to go and the trails that they really wanted to include in the recommendation. And so we did say, yes, people could, if with the right, the right signage enforcement has been an issue, but that they could get off and take a road. It is unsafe and there are other complications with that. But yes, they, people can comply with the regulations and get off of their trail system before entering ours. And that was the only case at that time where the, those circumstances existed. And so that's why we, we did it that way. I mean, that's, that's the reasoning.
Yeah.
John?
First, I want to thank staff for all your hard work on getting the project to this point. Along e-bikes on open space trails is a small but important step toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions, reducing vehicle miles traveled and helping the city meet our climate change goals will allow people to continue to enjoy the outdoors as they age or have disabilities. This is not some radical policy change we're talking about, but a simple change to bring our policies in line with the standard practice of surrounding open space organizations as well as state law and municipal regulations. I know everyone here has their own opinion on this, but I think it's important that we respect staff's time and hard work on this and weigh in on your recommendation. We also owe it to the public. We've spent several meetings on this over the last few months and I believe we have plenty of information. I would like to make a motion that we recommend that Boulder City Council allow class one into e-biking as a passive recreational activity permissible on open space trails were designated by the city manager per, per the proposed ordinance in the packet.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, and I'm not going to be able to quote.
I, I just think it's important that we like, let's just put it out there. We all, we all have an opinion on this and let's, you know, I'm fine with further discussion, but at, at some point we need to take.
Do you want to read it once more so that we have?
Uh, I, I read it as written from the package.
Okay.
I only, only read number one. I was, I was keeping it, this is separate.
Would you, uh, John, want to read it together with the second motion?
I mean, I, I, I think it might be best.
And put, put that on the floor.
Separate unless you all would recommend we kind of do them both at once, but it seems like we might want to have a separate discussion. What, what's your sense, Karen?
My sense is that it's better to keep them separate.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree.
Okay.
Because they're separate questions.
Yeah.
One could vote yes or no on either one of them.
Exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this motion before we vote on it?
Yeah, I guess I would like to add, you know, that passive recreation is this, this term that we came up with. And, you know, when I go trail running, I don't say, hey, I'm going to go passively recreate. It's just not something that's a common language term. And I think you all are right that it's up to this board to interpret what, what does that mean to us? And what does it mean to us today? The, the visitor master plan is now way overdue an update. And I know that we were going to have it on our plan some, sometime and I, hopefully in my tenure. And we were going to call it a recreation plan rather than a visitor master plan. I, I'd, I'd rather keep the name the same so people understand that, that we're talking about the same document. But I mean, I think, you know, when it comes to passive recreation, I believe that this is a policy decision that we're charged with and, and ultimately that city council is, is charged with. It currently fits within the definitions. You know, and it's, it conforms to state law. And, you know, the, the visitor master plan is eighteen years old and, and, and quite frankly, e-bikes were not a thing back then. Even though they existed, they were not a thing and they were definitely not common today, particularly in an environment where we see our community asking for this. And so I, I, I support considering e-bike use as passive recreation.
Michelle, let me, let me offer my definition of passive, just so you understand. And it's very simple, it's non-motorized. So when you're out running, um, you're, you're, you're actively enjoying open space, but in a non-motorized condition.
Have you checked out my new HOKES?
Yeah, I have, I have a pair and let me tell you, they aren't motorized.
Yeah, I, I understand that's where you're, you're coming from, Dave. That, and it's not where I come from. That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah, there's only one other aspect of, of this question that I, that I want to speak to. And that is the views of the aging population in Boulder. And I think the INTERCEPT survey has ample data to show that for people sixty years of age and older, there's an equal number of people that agree with no e-biking and that agree with e-biking. So it's not something that the quote aging population is in favor of, according to the INTERCEPT survey. The INTERCEPT survey shows that the respondents from age eighteen to twenty-nine and thirty to fifty-nine are the ones that want e-biking more than no e-biking. So attribution to an aging population is inappropriate in this case based on the INTERCEPT survey data.
And maybe the right word is aged population. I'm not trying to get all ageist, but there's aging. And then there's, you know, that's a point in time, right?
You gotta be careful. Michelle, I'm the oldest one in the room right now. So we could, we could duke out what, what an aged person is or what an aging person is, but I'm just saying what the data shows.
And as far as climate action is concerned, let, let's be clear. We're, the Open Space Board is, I'm sure unanimously, unanimously in support of accessing the open space in Mount Park's system by bicycle and e-bike. So if, if there's a concern about the climate impacts, certainly that is something that we're all supportive of. So e-bike access to open space trailhead is absolutely supported by all of us.
And what the master plan says is access, multimodal access to trailheads, not trails. And it's very straightforward as, as Dave just said.
So I'm going to call the question?
Okay. Let's do a, a roll call again in response to the motion that's on the screen. First one of those, John?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Caroline?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote no as well. So the motion fails. Three to two.
Question about business here, when, how, how would we add any sort of color to this divided vote? For what, whatever steps happen next?
We are required by our agreements, past agreements, that when there are no votes, we will explain why there are no votes in a phrase or a sentence. Is that what you're referring to, Michelle? Are you?
Yeah, I, I think when in our, our board procedures, when we talk about a dissenting opinion, are we?
There has to be an explanation for why the dissenting vote.
Is that only within a four one or is that in a three two?
So there's two areas where this could be documented. One is in the minutes itself, and then the second would be in the council memo in which we would have a separate section on board deliberations and decisions. And, uh, the, of both, both the, well, there might be several motions, would all be documented in that memo with a brief explanation. So, uh, council is made aware of the discussion as well. So I, I, I view them, view there's two avenues. One is within the minutes itself of the meeting and then uh, within the, the board deliberation section of the council memo.
And we may want to do both actually.
That's what I would recommend.
And I think, Michelle.
Let's just go ahead and do it right now.
And as we, well, as we move through motions, I think that that's going to be the position that both, you know, affirmative and, and what is it, non-affirmative?
Negative.
Negative. Uh, will be, will be explained. I don't think we ought, I think, I don't know, Leah, whether you have had enough sense of the conversation to put in the minutes why the no votes were cast and why the affirmative votes were cast.
I can summarize it if you'd like. I'd like Janet to correct me if I'm wrong. Generally, we wouldn't put a motion in when it doesn't pass. But I think what you're saying is we'd still include it in the minutes because you'd like for it to be captured for us and then for council.
Right.
And then if I'm hearing correctly, then like it to be summarized why two were in favor and three were not.
Right. Is that okay?
Yeah, so can we go ahead right, right here, right now and say descended because?
Just had a half an hour.
Let's just make some bold statements.
Yeah, and I hate, I don't want to speak for you, John, but I'll, I'll just, I'll do my, my thoughts and you can, you can say.
Just a minute and let us finish the descended because?
Well, that was going to give you the because, but okay.
Passive recreation is allowed in the charter and is defined as non-motorized.
You want to add something?
Uh, not at the moment.
I'll add that I don't feel that there's enough grounds for legislative finding to make the change.
Yeah, I would, let me, let me piggyback on that and say support that and say to make the change in the charter language.
Okay. Uh, Michelle and John, do you want to state why you voted in favor?
I, I don't believe that passive recreation is defined in the charter. It is defined in the visitor master plan as a policy. That visitor master plan is now outdated and overdue an update. At the time of writing, e-bikes were not considered.
I, I don't have anything else to add there. I think that's great.
Uh, maybe just to add that it's, uh, the visitor master plan and not in the charter. Passive recreation is a policy decision that's up to all of us to determine.
Up to council to determine.
Geez, Michelle, I'm going to disagree with that statement.
So, uh, Michelle, would you agree it's up to council to determine?
Okay.
We're, we're just making a recommendation here. They're actually making the determination.
That's right.
Yeah, you're right.
Then, then we would have to, then I would say we would have to add a sentence to the, if, uh, the negative, the passive recreation is not a policy decision up to council to determine.
Is the word e-bike?
Are you going to keep trying to one-up me, Dave? We're going to keep going back and forth.
Passive recreation is not, yeah, no, it would be passive recreation. Is, is not a policy decision that is up to council to determine.
The term passive recreation?
Yeah. It's, it's in the charter.
Well, do you want to say the term quote passive recreation?
If they say that, we'll say that. If each explanation says that, then I'm fine with it.
I would like to go up and, and three lines up, Leah. Is defined as non-motorized in the VMP and reiterated in the 2019 master plan.
Oh, that's, that is, that's not the two thousand five.
I know, this is the two thousand.
Does that, does the two thousand and five, um, what you looked at, use the word e-bike in anywhere?
They were not considered in two thousand and five. They were not considered in two thousand and five and earlier. That's kind of the point.
But it is in the twenty nineteen master plan.
Because we had to only reiterate things that were approved by council. We couldn't take those things back up for the master plan. That's what I understood. It's a carryover, a required carryover. You don't have to write that in there. I just wanted to get that on the record.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't changed in the twenty nineteen master plan. It was reiterated.
Because the argument would be if the, if it is policy and council wanted to change that language, then it could have. Right, I mean, it's an argument.
It's an argument of whether you can change it outside of the changing the charter. That's.
The policy is the council's purview to implement the charter.
So we beat a dead horse on this one. Are we ready to?
I think we've summarized the rationale.
Okay.
You wanted to offer your second one, John?
Oh, for your second mo- your second motion, right, for part two? I didn't, do we want to discuss uh that a little more or do we just want to dive in and and take a vote? I'm happy to make a motion on part two, or Michelle's?
Yeah, I'll 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 move on on the second part of that. Um, I'd like to recommend the OSMP department proceed with a staff preferred alternative with the addition of Chapman Drive and Wonderland Lake. I love the grammar here, but to implement this policy by designating.
After the words alternative B.
I think it belongs at the very end after Fort Canyon, technically.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay, good. I'm sorry here. Yeah, so it should actually be pref- preferred alternative. Staff preferred alternative.
That that read nicely to me. Does does that work, Michelle?
The staff prefer to implement this policy by designated and managing their trails in alternative B planes, trails located east of Broadway that allow biking, comma, and the Boulder Canyon Trail. I I think the um the Chapman Drive belongs after Boulder Canyon Trail.
Yeah, I don't think you need.
I I would say, I would say the hyphen that separates the alternative B. The definition of alternative B is planes, trails located east of Broadway that allow biking and the Boulder Canyon Trails for trail or e-biking. And then I put the other hyphen there so that you've separated off the definition of alternative B.
With the addition of Chapman Drive.
And Michelle, I think we ought to put the word trail after both of those additions so that people aren't thinking they're gonna ride their bikes into Wonderland Lake. Hey, when it's frozen over, you know?
Yeah, as long as I have those, um, as long as that's the proper name. I don't know if it's really the proper name of Wonderland Lake Trail.
I think it's the Foothills Trail.
Yeah, that's that's uh, that's what I meant. Is the Foothills Trail, the the portion, and I don't know if you have that map, but the portion that comes from the parking lot, but it goes all the way up to the Foothills Park.
Can you say the Foothills Trail around Wonderland Lake? Yeah, there you go for clarity.
Right, talking about going out to Lejo?
Yeah, uh to um, is it four? Yeah.
One of the lake, if the trail is only around the lake, uh.
Question is where you want to be able to go.
Right.
We're we're talking like.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, these these trails here.
That's fair with me. I'm pulling it up, which is taking me.
Yeah, it's Foot Foothills South, right? Which is from basically Wonderland Lake to Lejo.
Come on, did I get it? There we go. Um, so I think you are looking at.
Where your hand is, that's right.
That's what I'm trying to zoom in here. So.
And you have it labeled Foothills South, right?
Yeah, this one, I've got two maps here and this, it's labeled Foothills South. Yeah, I believe it's Foothills South. Sorry.
You don't show the lake actually on there.
I know.
It's from the Wonderland Lake Trailhead to uh Four Mile Canyon, Four Mile Canyon Trailhead.
That's correct. You know, Dave, you know how wonderful I am at these maps, but yes, that's right.
I'm trying to help you, Michelle.
Thank you. I'm map blind.
Can we keep this sort of in the background and go back to the text?
I have to stop sharing and then I can just reshare. So I, we can just.
If that is, is that the motion?
I think so. Are you the second?
I I will, I will second the motion.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote or?
Is this to recommend to Boulder City Council? Did I leave that out? Just to start.
Yeah.
You recommend to the department.
Yes.
No, it's the council recommends the department.
Yeah, recommend the, well, this is recommend that OSMP.
To the department.
Department. Yeah, this is a, I mean, it reads in the packet like a recommendation to the department.
It's a, it's a recommendation to the department to implement, as I understand.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
That was the intention when we put together.
And it's the the rule, the rulemaking authority is part of the uh first motion.
Okay, we ready to vote? Last call. Okay, John?
Uh, yes.
Dave?
No.
Caroline?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote no as well.
Just couldn't see about.
That's lack of, like, I would say, lack of legislative findings.
I think it's more than that.
So this is the application of the policy change. So the where on the system, if there's any additional information you all want to add to the where as opposed to the policy question.
The application.
We'll, we'll, we'll get to that.
Well.
If you, whatever you want reflected in the minutes.
Need to be reflected in the vote. Or did we do that? In the recording of the vote.
Or is the first one? Enough?
Um, I mean, I I have some comments I would add on why I supported the motion. If we want to jump to that, maybe that will inspire you. Uh personally, I would like, well, this probably doesn't go in the package. We saw overwhelming community support for option A. Option B feels like a great compromise um and allows us to kind of try this out on some trails. And feels like a great balance um of allowing commuting on select trails. Um, the Wonderland Lake Trails are an important north-south bike route. Allows bikers to stay off dangerous streets. And Chapman Drive, oh, Chapman Drive uh is the perfect place for e-bikes. It will allow great loop from the city and to Boulder. Chapman Drive is the perfect place uh for e- what did I say? To allow a great loop from the city into the wilderness. Yep, that looks good to me. And Michelle, anything to add there?
Yeah, I would say that it um provides our community equitable access to open space. We are about to launch an e-bike rebate program and it would be hypocritical to not allow them on our trails. We need to connect regional trail systems. For example, the Rocky Flats Trail System. We can't let fear of the unknown paralyze us from progressing. This meets our climate goals as it allows folks to access and use our trailheads without a car. We have to take into account our community surveys. No survey is perfect. But we can't discount those who don't live, who can't afford to live in our expensive city limits. And we should consider the difference between actual and perceived conflicts when we take e-biking into account.
We do trail connections such as Rocky Mountain Greenway because need to allow regional trails. Middle of your paragraph.
Oh.
Need to allow regional trails, regional trail connectivity such as the Rocky Mountain Greenway.
I don't know if I can add this at this point, but I I would like us to to consider at some point in time, um doing a pilot to um consider those trails west of Broadway slash thirty-six. Doesn't really explain my vote, but I think it goes to what you were saying, John, about um option A, su- support for option A.
Yep.
Is that inspiration for you, Dave?
That puts a lot in the e-bike basket.
I think so. You just start with the statement from the master plan that says biking is enjoyed by eighty-five percent of use OSMP users.
We can write that. The way that I had it worded in my head was um if it is, in fact, the person that John said that there was overwhelming community support for option A and B, which was a survey, is it a fact that eighty-five percent of open space users are pedestrians? Is that?
Those two things are not related in my mind.
But but is it a like percent of?
And they're not mutually exclusive either.
Of open space users are using their feet as opposed to anything else? Am I making that number up or reading it from somewhere else?
Our hikers or pedestrians, which are where we want to use.
And bikers don't use.
But that is a fact.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it's stated in the master plan.
Those are results from two different surveys with two different methodologies and and i- it may not be apples to apples. But I I would question the overall, the overwhelming community support, I think, came from the self-selected respondents.
Well, well, I think.
Yeah, and then public comment as well is where is where I'm getting that from as well.
It's a different, it's a different metric from from the overwhelming.
Well, I mean, I think my interpretation is the support was overwhelming for both the survey and the the public comment, so.
Dave, I think you could change the 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 text in our our paragraph if you, if you'd like to change your vote. Just an option for you. I'm just laying it all out there.
I'd like to change my vote, but uh you you're gonna have to change the motion.
Um, do you want to say anything here about the the bias in the presentation of the options?
Well, I think that's, yeah, I I I don't know how.
Question is, do you want to include what here? Yes or no?
I just don't want this to be, you know, a PhD thesis as far as uh why we did whatever we did. My my basic thing is that it doesn't meet the the charter language. And so to approve this motion when we don't think that it meets the part charter language, it is, it's irrelevant. Doesn't meet the charter language and so um it's, it's not appropriate.
Okay, I guess I'd like to add more than just that.
Okay.
You might want to think about how to condone that sentence a little bit better before we come back.
Well, a part of my.
What I want to go to is in the, in the memo for this meeting. There are trails that have a proportion from forty to sixty percent of bikes on county trails. And um and for for hikers to enjoy those trails is not an option. At some point, the the at some point, the percentage of bikes on trails becomes so high that hikers are displaced.
I think it overlaps too, when John was talking about the bikers being on the um streets and that being dangerous for them. It's dangerous for the pedestrians um on the trail just due to laws of acceleration and deceleration.
Right.
Uh, if you are just walking on your feet and you are hit by something going twenty miles an hour, that's very dangerous.
You see, my perspective on that is that the city needs to make its transportation corridors safe for bicycles. And if it's too dangerous for bicycles, that is a city transportation issue. And open space should not be seen as an alternative to making roadways for bicycles.
Well, it's like with the laws. Well, it's like, okay, and the other point, the other point that follows on from that is, is transportation and commuting are not purposes for open space in the city charter.
I just want to point out that you're making the case to not have any wiggle room at all. Dave, I'm looking at you. To provide any exceptions, and that's fine, and keep on typing, but that's, that's how I interpret how this is going.
Well, your interpretation is premature.
Okay.
I have some motion language that I'm going to offer as soon as we're done. And then we'll see what you think of that.
Can you embellish on the second sentence? Because I don't think it fits in like this. You need to craft a dependent sentence there so it'll communicate something to somebody.
For the first.
Maybe use of bikes on these trails. Or some subject.
And we can delete it. It's beating the dead horse and, you know, it said that above some. I think the idea here is that we imagine that e-bikes are allowed under the charter when we
Right.
We vote on this. Well, but use our imagination.
Or some of us imagine that they are not. Right? So, yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
There are trails that have, can we say up to forty to sixty percent bike users. Well, that level of, of bikes, that level of bike use. And provide dangerous conditions for pedestrians. And displace them.
Yeah, I think that I use the word hazardous for other open space users.
Okay, hazardous for other open space users.
I think biking on some city streets, even bike paths, is dangerous.
Right, it is.
Yes, it is. But that's a whole different issue. That the open space department should not be involved in solving.
Can I delete what I have highlighted?
Yes, please.
Transportation and purposes. I'm trying to remember, Dan, was it the motion above when you were talking about the Rocky Mountain Greenway? What, what was the word you were using right before that?
Did you give us clues?
Connectivity or?
If someone sees it, can you read it?
Oh. Was it in the, I think it was in our paragraph on the second motion, actually.
And Dan wanted to add about the Rocky Mountain.
Regional trail connectivity such as Rocky Mountain Greenway? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, the, the language of, or the words regional trail connectivity. Want to consider something like that down below. That was all I needed, Leah. I just didn't remember what that said.
Another statistic that we've been provided with is that fifty percent of the intercept survey respondents said class two e-bike should not be allowed.
I know this was a not gonna say I know, and I think I'm gonna direct this at you, Dan. I think you probably know the best. If it was the county that I was reading. That when they, if I'm getting this right, when they approved e-bike use, they thereby had to talk about e-scooters. And their language said that one would be the other. Am I getting that right?
Marty, you were hoping to leave that effort for the county. Maybe you could clarify that.
She looks confused. She looks like.
E-scooters were prohibited.
Yes. Okay, so that.
That's correct.
Yeah, deliver distinctly.
Yes. And what I was reading was not saying it was so, it was discussing some version of if they allow e-anything, do they allow e-anything? But that's not the case.
There was some confusion on that, and I think the determination that, the interpretation that was made is that that element was relative to the equipment itself. Right? So that the equipment of an electric scooter and an electric bike had to meet certain things consistently, but not the use of where they.
They wrote their ordinance very narrowly.
That's correct.
To just be specific to.
Leah, where you are there at the fifty percent. Will you keep going and say fifty, uh, no, eighty percent were concerned about rider speeds? Fifty-six percent were concerned about e-bikes displacing other visitors.
Karen, on that fifty percent, were you referencing class two e-bikes or just e-bikes in general? Fifty percent said e-bike should not be allowed.
Class two e-bikes should not be allowed. Thank you. And the other thing that goes with that statement, Leah, is that the wildlife refuge only allows class one e-bikes. If you could cut and paste that up before the eighty percent statement. That'd be good.
Yeah, we, we ought to make sure that the name of the refuge is Rocky Flats. Wildlife, or whatever it is, we should make that clear. With clarification.
Karen, I know we're not done here, but I just want to note you that it's, is it nine? So whenever we maybe you're at a point.
I'd like another round two. Another bite of apple.
You're talking about verbiage for you, the vote?
Yeah, well, for my section, yeah, for our section.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't know where we go. This proposal, I mean, the proposal of this motion would allow for consistency of user experience through, with neighboring land managers. And be easier for users to understand and comply with.
Is that it?
Yeah. It gave me inspiration, so I'm just tossing that in there.
See yours, it just won't stop vibrating. Like what became her? She's like so panicked, like, oh, stop!
Okay, I think we're done with this for now. And if we need to make any revisions, we can do it in the context of the minutes of the meeting.
I'm fine with that. So Karen, I'd like to make a motion. But before I do that, I gotta ask Dan, part of my motion, Dan, will be to repeal and remove the language in the ordinance on disposal. So I don't know if we need to specify that in a motion or not. Since we.
Are you talking the twenty sixteen?
Seven, five, twenty-five. Parts in the traffic.
Basically says, you know, how disposal of open space is necessary, you know, that language. So part of the motion is to repeal that language, and the concern I have is that we did not support the staff's recommendation where that language was deleted from the ordinance. So do we need to make that motion to delete that language? On, on the need to dispose in order to have e-bikes operate on open space.
You might prove that to Janet, but my understanding is you have, we have to repeal or amend seven, five, twenty-five in order to have e-bikes on open space.
We, my motion is gonna speak to that.
Okay.
My question is, you know, but my question is, do we have to repeat, have language that repeals the existing language on disposal?
It sounds like maybe you could amend it instead of repeal it? I'm not sure.
Well, I don't want to amend, I want to get rid of it. I, and so the revisions that were in the packet
Oh.
actually do that. But we just did not support the recommendation where that language was.
I see. You would support the repeal of seven, five, twenty-five, but not the ordinance changes that we recommended in chapter eight?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Do I have, so do we have to make the motion?
You're good.
I've been writing that all together. I, I think it would probably would be good to make that in the motion so that, because our, well, I don't know, I defer to Janet on that. I, you know, I, I know what you're asking, but I'm not sure how your motions. Yeah.
So the motion is to move to recommend the city council the following. The Open Space Board of Trustees recommends that language in the current code, BRC seven dash five dash twenty-five, titled No Electric Assisted Bicycles on Open Space. And then I quote the entire thing, "No person shall activate the motor of an electric-assisted bicycle on any recreational path or trail on open space land as defined in the city charter, section one seventy, except where the path or trail has been transferred to a city department pursuant to chapters or charters, section one seventy-seven, quote, disposal of open space land, or section eight dash eight eleven, transfer of open space lands, BRC nineteen eighty-one." And then the ordinances that were listed, seven, seventy-nine, forty-one, seventy-nine, sixty-five, eight, eighty, zero, seven, and eighty, forty-four, seven, dash, be repealed and removed from all applicable city ordinances. So that language is repealed.
You can make that motion.
I mean, I would feel better doing that, but do I need to do that? That's.
You, if, if that's a recommendation that you want to make to council, then yes. But you wouldn't, you're gonna move it from those previously listed ordinances, because that's already done. You just say, "The board recommends that seven dash five dash twenty-five be repealed."
Okay. What I would like is, depending upon how the vote goes, if you or someone can clean up whatever needs to be cleaned up, that would be great.
And Karen.
So that's the first part of the motion. So further, the Open Space Board of Trustees recommends that the following language be inserted into BRC Boulder Revise Code seven dash five dash twenty-five, titled No Electric Motor-Assisted Bicycles on Open Space. This is the language. Electric motor-assisted bicycles are prohibited on open space and mountain parks lands. Period. Electric motor-assisted bicycles are not identified or delineated as passive recreational use in Article twelve, Section one seventy-six C of the city charter. So that is the first motion. And then, interestingly enough, I have a second one. That.
Let's not go there.
But we aren't gonna go there, but you, you may think things are hanging on this one, but hopefully they'll be tied up a little better in the second one. If, um, if this is.
So Dave, can you tell us in plain English what you're trying to accomplish with this?
I want to get rid of any reference to the need to dispose open space in order to provide opportunities for e-bike use on open space trails. It's ordinance language says, so we want to repeal that. And actually, that supports the staff recommendation to revise the language in the ordinance. It's, it's, all it does is specifically say, "We want to get rid of that language." And then what I, what I'm suggesting is that we say that e-bikes are prohibited on open space because they don't need passive recreational uses as defined in the charter. And then in motion two, which will come up, then we'll deal with some other issues. But I'm, I'm trying to be clear that either we're gonna say electric motor-assisted bicycles are approved or they are prohibited. And, and they're prohibited because they're not delineated as a passive recreational use in the city charter.
So let me, let me ask you this, Dave. Like, is your second motion to, like, allow an exception for e-bikes in certain places? Because like, I think that would be helpful to, to maybe understand the fuller picture of what you're trying to do.
That's what I share. So I can do, I can do that. And then we can return and go to motion one.
Okay. It's nine, ten at this point.
Let me just.
Let's get the motion on and then take a break.
And so we, if we go to motion two.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is a little funky. Okay. So motion two then is going to be the use of exceptions.
And it's in chapter eight, as Marnie and
Right.
said, we need to move it to chapter eight.
This is in eight, three, six. So it says, "No person shall operate an electric motor-assisted bicycle or other mechanized power-assisted vehicle in any open space mountain parks lands, except..." And so this is intended to give some flexibility to address some of the issues that we've been talking about. One of the things, though, we're concerned about is that we want to make sure that alternatives to open space trails for e-bikes are definitely considered and, and determined, or as it says, where a regional trail needs access to sections of open space trail to enable connectivity and connectivity. And then where special designations and enforcement requirements have been determined necessary to meet land protection, natural resource, and visitor management goals on open space mountain parks lands and trails. It's not, and I guess in this discussion, from my perspective, it's not a cartwash, everything east of Broadway. This means that there. This means that there are, you know, specific sections of open space trails that are evaluated and determined to meet, you know, uh, I don't know, yeah, did you, do you have the bullets? The bullet should be there. No, you don't. Oh, shoot.
I think I copied from what you said.
Yeah.
If I can try and-
Yeah. Uh, so, so as a second paragraph in that, I put, such special designation will be based on and include the following criteria. Natural and cultural resource impacts evaluated and resolved, multi-jurisdictional trails and/or land management, regional trail connection, suitable trail width fifteen feet wide to allow separation of users, suitable trail surface, and safety, accommodate, accommodate e-bikes without impacting no uses, maintenance requirements and designation for responsibility for maintenance and enforcement requirements, including speed limits for bikes. So those are some of the suggestions that I had, that I thought we might discuss if we wanna pursue this when that determination by staff is being made. So these bullets are intended to guide that.
Thank you, too complicated. No, thank you, that, that helps.
Yeah, so-
Make, it makes a lot more sense.
These two emotions, yeah, are, are kind of sequential. So then the e-bike use is prohibited.
As a charter.
Because the charter, but-
There's a mechanism.
For exceptions.
So the rule and then an exception.
Yeah. And there's some guidance for what those exceptions might be.
Okay, if we're gonna take a break now, can anybody guide us to where there are restrooms in this building?
I would welcome a second before we take a break while we're still thinking about. Um, I'm just wondering, before we have a second, if, if we maybe wanna, cause I know there's a lot in here with and whether we want maybe Janet to have an opportunity to to see if all this would, would work. Is that? Would you like that opportunity as a board?
Can she have, can she make?
After the break.
During the break?
This-
So that we can go there after the break?
Yeah.
You might need a few minutes to-
So after the break, we can ask Janet to run through this and see what CAO interpretation may be. And okay, that sounds good.
Do you guys need the bullets, the bullets?
Leah's gonna put the bullets in there as we-
Okay, and the restroom directions are?
Let's, I'm sitting there.
Happens every board meeting.
Do we need more than five minutes for a break? It depends on how many restrooms there is.
Nothing too embarrassing.
There's one restroom, there's two.
Just make sure you-
I think we need ten minutes. All right, ten minutes left.
They're all ready.
Thank you. Okay, where's Dave?
He just, he's going somewhere.
There he is.
Okay, Dave. We have your motion, I think, on the table.
Now with the bullets. That is?
Yep. Okay, so now that you've seen the whole thing, and I'm gonna turn to John and say, can we go back and deal with these one at a time?
Uh, I, I'm fine with that at this point. Yeah, I think I, I see the whole picture now.
Okay. So we're back up to this motion. And my question is, do you wanna do it in two parts? Do you wanna have a vote first on the part to get rid of seven, five, twenty-five?
To repeal the-
To repeal that, the current language in seven, five, twenty-five.
If Janet has said that we can do that.
I think she's already said that, right? You can make that recommendation, yes.
Yeah.
And, and while you're listening, while I have the floor. I, I have, I have some real problems with, with the language of the second motion, so I just wanted to daylight that. Because it's amending the Boulder revised code, the city attorney's office has the, the final say in the language, and I'm happy to go through and tell you what the issues are. We would have to change it. Some of the things in order to present, or, or I would be telling city council that we would be changing the language that's proposed so that it's consistent and, and it's language that can be enforced. But there's some clarification I need even on some of the concepts that you're raising, so-
We can do that.
Okay, so we should go ahead and proceed with our action on this, Janet, first, and then go on to that cycle.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, um, can we, can we move just the first part, or do you wanna move the first and the second part?
No, I think we, we move the first section.
Part to repeal and-
Right. And then the, yeah, and then the, and then the further is the second one.
And I will, I will second that motion. To repeal and remove the language that's up there on the screen. Are there any questions about the motion or comments before we vote? Michelle?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't really understand how this acts sort of in isolation of the others.
I don't know that it does, it's just one step along the path.
Michelle, I just didn't wanna leave this language hanging there. Because I think it's, uh, extremely important, and I think the staff saw it as that as well, but since we did not accept the staff recommendation, then there is no action that the board has taken to repeal that language. And so this is an effort to make sure that disposal language gets repealed.
The city council. Language in the current BRC be repealed and removed. Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm gonna call for a voice vote one by one. John?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
I vote yes.
So then the next one is language to replace the language that was repealed.
I'm sorry, yes, I second.
Okay, Caroline's second. Are there any further questions or discussion?
I have one question. Um, if, if Janet, if we approve this language and then go to the second motion and say there are exceptions were designated, can, can we do that? It's, you know, with clarity or consistency?
When we go to city council, we can make it clear that it was a package. And you could even say on the record that it's a package that they are interrelated.
Okay.
Um, the, I, I, I don't know if I want, if you would like me to tell you the, the issues I have with the second part of that language now, um, because maybe you'd like to do an amendment to the language?
Are you talking about this second part or the second part down below?
The electric motor assisted bicycles are prohibited?
Yeah.
That's what's on the table?
That's right.
So um, I would offer some changes to delete open space and mountain parks and insert open space lands as defined in city charter, section one seven zero. Because there's nothing in the Boulder revised code that's really called open space and mountain parks land, so I'm just tying it to the language of the charter.
That sounds fine, can we do that?
Yeah, and Janet, would you, open space lands as defined in city charter section one seven zero? And the second sentence is okay?
No.
She said her a few things.
Okay, keep going.
So, so the, the code already define, has a definition of electric assisted bicycle. So what I would, what I think makes it more precise is to say, operation of an electric assisted bicycle is not defined as a pass, passive recreational use, et cetera.
I think that sounds fine.
It's the same thing, except it's-
Right, that's much better.
But, but let me point out, Janet, that in the title, the existing title for seven, five, twenty-five is no electric assisted bicycle. But it doesn't have the word motor. That's what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
It's not defined, is what you're recommending, instead of not identified, or is that no matter? It's not-
No, I think she's-
It's not, it's not defined.
I have to see what you're typing.
Yeah, I, I changed, changed the title of seven, two, twenty-five by adding motor.
Yeah, we don't want motor in there.
I do though. Uh, so if the board passes this, we just did, didn't we? If the board passes this again with the word motor in it, what does that mean?
It means it's not defined in the code, it's inconsistent with the definitions that city council has already adopted.
Okay, well then we should probably delete it. But I think it makes it more clear on what the motion language is intending to do. Yeah, if we put it there, that might be okay. Or I don't know, is that okay, Janet, if we put it in the second sentence? It's still my-
It's, it's not consistent with the code.
Yeah, we better delete it everywhere. Yeah.
See.
Okay.
I would read it again, if you don't mind, that changed a lot. I would read it again and second answer. Okay, thanks.
Would you want me to do that?
I will.
I haven't moved, no, I moved, uh, the open space board of trustees recommends that the following language be inserted into Boulder revised code seven dash five dash twenty-five, titled no electric assisted bicycles on open space. Electric assisted bicycles are prohibited. Uh, maybe I'll keep on, are prohibited on open space lands, it's defined in city charter, section one seventy. Operation of an electric system, assisted bicycle is not defined as passive recreational use in article twelve, section one seventy-six C of the city charter. What I was gonna suggest, Leah, is if we can make paragraphs, uh, starting with the second sentence there, because we're talking about the title, and then this is the language. Right, right.
So do you want a, a colon then, after the title? Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
And should open space be little O, little S, Janet?
Yes. And the catch line, the, what you're calling the title, the catch line, that's not a part of the ordinance, so that, that, it's just kind of an identifier. So even having what you have without, without that being the title, I mean, we can call it that, I mean, we can use that catch line to say electric assisted bicycles prohibit on open space, but then say electric assisted bicycles are prohibited in open space. Exactly what you have in the second part, that, that second paragraph. So you're, what you're recommending, I'm not being clear, what you're recommending is the, the catchphrase, or the, the, the title of it, and so I think we need to make that clear. Leah, maybe that they're recommending the title be changed?
Well, I think, no, like, I thought that, isn't that the title? What, what I'm recommending is whatever the title is.
To keep the existing title.
In which I thought was no electric bike, assisted bike.
That's correct. It is.
So I'm just referring, so the, the new language goes under that title.
I understand what you're saying, and that works.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, have we read it adequately, Leah? Or she's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Caroline, you still second?
Yes.
What's the changes?
Okay. Okay, um, any other questions before we vote? Okay, John?
No. Hey, John?
Hey.
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
And I vote yes.
So do we wanna do the explanations?
No, let's keep going down.
Okay.
I, I like Janet's idea of a package.
Me too. Should I read this again, Leah?
Yeah, let's hear Janet's comments first, okay?
Right.
Vehicle regulation. The first change that I recommend that you make is, again, to delete the word motor, so it's not motor assisted.
Okay.
And then going on, um, other mechanized power assisted vehicle on any, and I would insert open space lands as defined in city charter, section one seven zero. The same reason, because there isn't a definition of-
That's great. And delete the rest of that.
Exactly, delete open space and mountain parks lands. So you say, except where there are no alternatives. I'm afraid that that wouldn't pass constitutional muster, because there are alternatives. And constitutional standard is whether reasonable people can understand what the law is requiring them to do or to not require them to do. So kind of with that as a backdrop, there are alternatives. The alternatives would be that somebody gets off a trail and goes onto a road. So I'm not sure what I would, I would like to understand to help frame the language. Uh, I'd like to understand what your concept is with that, with there being no alternatives. And then a regional, um, trail needs access to a- Trail needs access to a short segment. So that's the one that's definitely too vague. Instead of saying a short segment, who, who would know if they were trying to comply with the law, what a short segment is? So I recommend having some kind of distance. I mean, what do you mean by short? We need to let people know how to comply. So what's a short segment?
Or we could just say access to an open space trail, right? Except for.
I think that we could help you craft it if, if I understood better. You know, what the concept was, but would you like me to, do you want to stop with the, with that? Or would you like me just to finish out?
Let's do that. Let's do this. So the concept is that on multi jurisdictional trails. Um, you know, the, there are different jurisdictions that are managing parts of some of these trails. And so. Um, in the, in those cases or some of those cases. Um, whereas a section of an open space trail is required to make, you know, to enable connectivity and con- congruity. Um, then that would be, that should be considered as a possible exception to the prohibition. And the thing on alternatives is that. I don't think we ought to just kind of axiomatically say, well, you know, it's, it's kind of like the Boulder Erie Railroad. Rate. You know, oh, there's railroad grade. We can just put it there, even though that bicycle's a, a really important, uh, part of the open space system. When in fact, if you looked at the right away on Belmont. Road, you know, there, that could accommodate. The re- a regional trail collection. And so that's what I'm trying to get at is that. Just because an open space trail will mess, might necessarily do that, that doesn't mean that. The other alternatives shouldn't be examined and determined. Uh, in, in a determination made on, uh, their appropriateness.
Would it help to have more concrete examples?
You mean like any including but not limited to? What might help is to. Just, this is great with you articulating what your intention is. And then understand that the language will try to capture that concept that we. Make a rec- that we recommend to city council.
Yes.
A lot of eyebrows in that communication.
What you said. But we could, yeah, I'm just a little hesitant to get rid of the word alternatives, although I definitely hear and understand what you're saying. Um, I just want to make sure, and I don't know, maybe the bullets below kind of helped clarify that, but I just think. We need to make sure that just because an open space trail exists in a certain place, doesn't necessarily mean that it has to fulfill. The desired function if in fact there are other equally satisfactory alternatives. And particularly where such activities might. Uh, influence or impact, you know, some of the things that are listed specifically below in the bullets.
So what you're saying, I think, is an alternative could be. Um, a route that goes along. The, what do you call it? The edge.
Right away.
The right of way of. An existing road.
Right. US thirty-six is a good example, if we need an example.
Or, or the Belmont. What is it called then?
Road.
The. Yeah, what's the Belmont route called? There's a one state Isabel, the Belmont Isabel corridor. Belmont Isabel corridor is an alternative.
Well, there wouldn't, there'd be an alternative to everything, wouldn't there be? I mean, your alternative is get a ride. Don't even give your bike. I mean. If you use this word specifically.
It has to be an alternative that allows the bike access.
But I mean, this language here is there's an alternative to everything. I mean.
Right. So it's too wide open and it needs to be further defined is what Janet's saying, right?
Correct.
So are you thinking an alternative such as like a, a, a like facility and?
Well, I am at the point of saying, you know, alternative, if, if the word alternative gets us into this.
Use alternative as the adjective instead of the noun.
Well, I'm just saying, except where a regional trail needs access to a segment of open space trail.
Do you like that one Janet?
That gets us closer.
But, but how long's the segment?
I don't know. A portion, a part, you know, hopefully we have good judgment. Um, and you know.
But Janet wants more than good judgment. She wants something defined, right?
Well, they vary. I mean, it may be a couple hundred yards and it may be half a mile or, you know, it. You, you look at, I don't know, Marnie, if you want to bring up the trail map again, but if you look at various. Uh, multi jurisdictional trails. Uh, there, they, the open space sections on those trails varies. In distance.
Are we looking for plural, um, pretty telling, I'm just trying to be helpful, plural for one of two or more available possibilities? Or there is also plural for someone or something that serves as substitute. Departures from the norm.
No, we need to, we need to define the length, I think, is what we're looking for.
Yeah, it's whether it's short or long or what's short, what is short. And I don't know what short means. Um.
It might be a hundred yards and it might be a half a mile.
Right, so a segment.
But it's not, but it's not, you know, two miles.
It's not the whole trail. It's a part of the trail.
What about the word discretion Janet? It's a, it's a helpful word to know.
And it's so hard to draft on the fly. Um, again, the issue is that. If a person wants to comply, how do they know if there's a short segment? Or not? So it, it, how, how, how do you? I, I mean, I think I understand the concept that you're getting at. I'm, I'm just not sure sitting here tonight.
Are you putting the math up?
I'm getting there.
Can't tell what you're doing.
I know, I can't quite get it out there. So I'm trying to, there we go.
Now can you zero in on like Lobo?
As, as Marnie's zeroing in Janet, when my, my feeling is that it's a segment required to, you know. Make the connection and not continuity. And so it, it. Again, it's going to be, uh, it's going to vary and it's going to be judgment call.
Uh, but Lobo trail is a good example that we've, um, shared in the past.
Right.
Um, and you can see my little hand there. So, uh, pink is open space and mountain park. And then you've got a segment of. Boulder County managed trail, um, and then a segment of, um. City of Boulder open space. And do we know scale on there? Um. Sure, there is a scale. Going back and forth between opening. Uh, there we go. So, gosh, um. Somewhere between, I mean, this segment here. Could be about, looks like maybe. Uh, three quarters of a mile possibly. And then another segment that's probably about a half mile to three quarters of a mile is what comes to mind. Um. There are some other segments like. Uh, that, that it might be worthwhile to think about. Um, like down in, in this area here, um, with the transportation trails. Um, that are managed by transportation. But are on open space lands. Um, so that is the, you know, other.
So that's already been disposed of in transit.
They haven't been disposed of though.
Or maintained by.
They're maintained. They were honestly, I think, constructed and built by, I mean, constructed and then are maintained by transportation. And these ones are shorter segments. So getting to the point of like short versus long, um, if you're trying to define. What that looks like. I'm not sure if, if saying seven, you know, less than a mile, I'm not sure if you're trying to get to a certain distance.
I guess I don't pay with just saying whatever statements are required for, you know, whatever sections are required.
I think we get there if we remove the word short.
Yeah.
So a segment and then it ties in with your continuity.
Right.
So it's a segment, um, necessary to enable con- connectivity.
Barney, stop there and go back. Here is, keep going.
Uh, down?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, stop. Is, is the teller trail and the gun barrel trail, is that a segment? Or is that more than a segment? Janet, in what you're thinking?
I think what we need to do is not call it short or long, or ju- just say that it, if it's necessary to enable connectivity and continuity. So I don't know that, that a distance really matters. If, if one of the elements is that here's a segment and the only way. That you can be on this connected trail is to cross this segment, then. E-bikes would be authorized in those instances.
When you can go throughout the whole open space and mountain park system, the second.
No, no. Uh, the, because it has to be multi jurisdictional. So that may be two miles, uh, East Boulder Teller. But that's, I don't know, Karen, that's the way it is. Um, you know, it's, it's going to vary.
That's a good question. Sorry Janet, eventually if OSBT makes a motion, recommend it, ultimately council would have to. Basically the motion is going to council to make these changes.
As a recommendation.
As a recommend to these ordinances and. I just like at ten o'clock at night drafting ordinance thing. Is it better to have an intent to really clearly state the intention? Um. And then understand that ultimately city attorney's office and we'll make a recommendation to council is if they choose. The, is that kind of the process?
I think that is a good.
Or is it, is it really critical to be like, we're drafting ordinance language tonight?
I, I don't think we want to draft ordinance. So understanding the concept is very helpful. And then what we would say is. The open space board of trustees recommended this.
Yeah.
City attorney's office recommend, recommends alternate language because. There are enforcement issues or, or whatever. So we could. Take your concept or try to take your concept and put it into language that is. Hopefully going to pass constitutional challenges for vagueness, for vagueness, ambiguity. I don't know if that makes sense, but. But yeah, you don't have to draft the exact language tonight.
Wait, my goal is to be as simple and clear as we can.
Sure.
You know, um, so that we're not kind of coming back in these kind of conversations later. Um, but I think here for better or for worse, we're going to have to. Uh, not define what a segment is.
But he's still saying that it'd be multi jurisdictional.
Right.
So when you say that you could say segment and then you could go forever. Is that what you're seeing or are you not seeing? Because it would only, that connectivity option would only apply if it was a multi jurisdictional. Area in question.
But that word is not in here right now, right?
Well.
Do you want me to pull this back down? So you can see what, what, what's in there?
Language.
With the languages.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, we, yeah, we probably.
I can.
Michelle, did you see that? Well, we talked, we talked, it's what we talked about. So, uh, multi jurisdictional is one of the factors.
Okay, so do we want to put in? Except where a multi jurisdictional regional trail.
Requires. Access to.
You don't need to type all this Leah, it's in this phrase. And keep multi jurisdictional.
That was a good, that was a good word.
And then delete the regional trail.
No, it should be a regional trail that requir- requiring access.
That's what it says in the next phrase. You're stopping too soon.
Well, I'm trying to get rid of short segment.
Well, just get rid of short segment. To enable connectivity and. To a segment, you just.
You'll need, you'll need an OS and B trail.
Yeah, just a short.
It's still a segment. It's not the whole trail.
Right, okay. Right, does that, does that, is that a little cleaner Janet?
Yes, it gets us a lot closer. And of course I wouldn't say open OSMP trail, it would be.
A little O, little S, open space.
Space as defined.
I don't know who wrote that.
It was a valiant attempt.
Sorry, completely missed the mark.
But you're not ready for law school, are you?
And then what I, I would finish that, that off just again with clarifying. Having consistency of definitions. So where it's open space and management goals. On, instead of saying open space and mountain park lands, we would say on any recreational path. Or trail on open space land and as defined.
Okay, that's fine.
As defined in the charter, did you have?
Well, as, as defined in city charter section one, seven, zero.
He keeps using that same phrase. It's a magic phrase.
Michelle, let's get your vote. Are you, John? Dude.
Uh, Dave, I just want to say that I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. And, um, and, and your many years at, in the department. Um, and I appreciate you making an attempt to compromise. Um, but, but this is, this package is not something that I can support.
Okay. Hopefully I can maintain that and thank you.
Um, is that criteria that you listed the only ones? I remember Janet saying. Included but not limited to or something along those lines earlier. Do you want it to just be what is listed?
Yeah, I, uh. I don't necessarily like included but not limited to in, in this kind of language.
I agree. I, I think that the way that we have shaped it now, it makes it. It, it, it improves this significantly where we wouldn't have to give examples.
Right.
Okay, I think we need a reading so that we can.
Just try. Kind of, I can't even see it.
Can you enlarge the?
No, no, I, I can see it.
You can't, okay. There are ways.
So, I am moving, Dave moves, or I move, right? Uh, let's see, what is this? Uh, this is. Recommends to council. Yeah, recommended council, yeah. Uh, revised language. Revised language for uh, section eight, three, six of the Boulder revised code. That is that. Tell me what you need, Janet, for that.
That that gets us there. That gets us what we need.
Because it says seven A is is an addition. I think there are six.
There are six already.
Yeah, so it's, this is a new one. And I don't know that we have to say that or not, but that's what it is. So, uh, seven A, no person other than persons authorized by the city manager. Operate an electric assisted bicycle or other mechanized power assisted vehicle on any open space lands as defined in city charter section one seventy, except where a multi-jurisdictional regional trail requiring access to a segment of open space trail to enable connectivity and continuity. And where special designation and enforcement requirements have been determined necessary to meet land protection, natural resource, and visitor management goals. On any recreational path or trail, space land is defined in city charter section one seven. I hesitated, Leah, because we need to uh, remove the comma after natural resource. Because it's connected to the word goals. Management goals. So it's natural resource and visitor management goals. So, uh, continuing the next paragraph, such special designation will be based on and include the following criteria. Natural and cultural resource impacts evaluated and resolved. Multi-jurisdictional trail and or land management. Uh, what?
Regional trail connection.
Regional trail connection. Suitable trail width fifteen feet wide and allow separate pedestrian and bike lanes. Suitable trail surface, natural surface, and sustainably accommodate accommodate specific uses. Safety, accommodate e-bike use without impacting other uses. Maintenance requirements and designation of responsibility for maintenance. Enforcement requirements, including speed limits for e-bikes. Well, yeah, but with this is addressing the bike, so. Or maybe we just say speed limits. Let's just do that.
For runners?
Yeah. Runners like I know.
Yeah, runners, especially with my brand new pair of HOKAs. My electric powered HOKAs.
Speed limits and the way I run are are mutually exclusive concepts. So I would welcome a second.
A second.
I'm I'm just gonna ask you, Dave, under um, suitable trail width fifteen feet wide to allow pedestrian, separate pedestrian and bike lanes. I'm assuming that you mean that there would be a separate lane for each direction or is that not even the case? Just one that that they would be separated. And the other part of that question is, how many trails out there are actually fifteen feet wide?
Out in the Lobo area a lot. They're almost all.
Wide, that width was recommended to me by an anonymous source.
Boulder County.
More in confidentiality.
Um, the regional trails are eight feet wide. That's the standard is like crusher fine eight foot. For Boulder County's trails, so.
Without that local area, they're cement, aren't they?
Um, well, because I was thinking about the connectivity.
Ones that I made across them.
Um, and then you would speak to the width of.
Yeah, I mean, fifteen feet is. I don't know that we had.
I mean.
Like vehicle.
Transportation trails are built to a ten foot standard.
Right.
So the fifteen foot um, does seem a little wide.
Our our city multi-use path minimum is like ten feet. And it can go up to like twelve feet. And then you get in kind of to Janet's point about clarification, you know, you get into like, is that the actual tread width? And then you have a clear zone of a shoulder and so.
So should it say ten to twelve feet if we're talking about multi-use separating bicycles from pedestrians?
Yeah, and then we don't really have separate, you know, when we say multi-use, it's intended to be all used out. Like in the civic part, there is truly defined pedestrian path with a bike.
What if you don't say eight to ten feet wide? Period.
Do you know how wide that one is? Civic?
I mean, I don't, I don't want to promote, you know, interstate highways either.
Right.
Right, right.
And so I think, Jeff, your notion is like, yeah, okay, you know, we they're not the confusion is they're not separate lanes. They're, you know, they're a trail that accommodates the various uses.
So. Just for a point of clarification, eight to ten feet is what and shared is what thinking?
Right. Yeah.
I mean, that would be consistent with um, with trail standards, I believe, of of both the city and the county.
Great.
And that would be.
We have trails that are managed for vehicular access that are like eight to ten feet wide. You know, you can think about certain paths where you can drive a vehicle down that are typically, I think, the trails you're referring to here. Right, so I mean, eight to ten would be reasonable.
Okay, and then just talk to me about trails that have on peak days on the order of of thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent of the users are bikes. Then where on that width would pedestrians be?
So what what is um, the standard for bike lanes? Is it like two and a half, three feet? Does that give five feet for pedestrians?
Are you talking on multi?
Yeah, just on a multi-use trail, what?
On a mo- um, the multi-use trails are generally designed to accommodate. Um, well, multi-use trails are designed to accommodate the mix of users. Um, and eight feet is generally, I I mean, without pulling up the standard, I would suggest.
Jeff's got this kind of transport.
Right, I mean, because there there are several widths on um. Well, you would speak better to this or if.
Well, like I said, the city's multi-use path and we could have a pretty long conversation on, because ten foot is the minimum. And that goes to like Ashtoe and different safety guidance where you have bikes and pedestrians, rollerblades, dogs on leash, stroller, anybody that might be using that path. Ten foot is kind of that accepted minimum. Sometimes like Ashtoe is a different standard and that goes down to, and that's like what Marty was saying, some of the county trails. But Karen, to your question about what's the appropriate dimension for hikers and bikers? I think is what you're asked to kind of coexist. You know, with enough space. A lot of our staff would even say, you know, some of our trails are more narrow and that actually isn't a benefit because it encourages and forces people to slow down. And I think we've seen that on multi-use paths and trails within our system. There are some, you know, like the person commenting earlier during public comment about safety issue, that's actually a help, a benefit. Wider doesn't necessarily mean better. In some cases where you have a more narrow trail than that forces speed control and safety and that sort of thing, but. The the standard that we would use if we had like our bottling trail, I think it's at eight, seven to eight feet width. But it's, you know, goes up to like ten feet. It's managed for vehicular use. So I think those are the the types of trails you're considering with in in terms of that regional connectivity.
And the city O S M P trails have a mix. They have different categories of width, so as narrow as three. Like on the map.
Yeah.
But my concern is when you have a level of bike use on a trail that is up thirty percent or more to sixty percent bike use. And it's narrow. Then where do the pedestrians go?
Well, I mean, that that kind of falls into that multi-use ethic.
I mean, the truth is they stop using the trails, like they they go to.
Well, that's my impression. I'm trying to say.
There 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 is an ethic and there is like an order to that.
Right.
Um, it's not to say that everybody follows it, but I'll tell you that I follow it. And my kids follow it. Um, but the um, the bike yields to the pedestrian. This happens on lots of places on where bikes are allowed on open space today.
Yeah, and I think if we really want to dive, I would probably invite um, either Francis or call in some of our human dimensions to our recreation staff to kind of talk through some of the the conflict, perceived conflict versus what we see, you know, and how that how that works. In other words, are we seeing a lot of pedestrians feeling threatened or not using a trail because of bikes or they?
Well, you can look at the number of pedestrians using the trail and know that they're not there. That's not measuring conflict, it's just seeing that they've chosen not to go there.
Steep to go.
Well, Karen, I I.
They choose to not go there because of also like traffic or crowding of lots of other hikers. There's lots of, they don't like dogs. There's lots of reasons why people to um, choose to not use a trail anymore. Not just bikes. And and so I like where you're going, Jeff, but I feel like we've covered a lot of that material about conflicts and perceived conflicts of the the study in Missoula that um, people um, had a value, a social value conflict. And that they they perceive conflict because of that social value difference. Um, we saw that with Missoula and and bikers and we also saw it um, wherever that was with uh, oh, Yellowstone with um, backpackers and llamas. They had a different value. They perceived conflict even though it hadn't actually happened. So I feel like we've covered that. Um, and and we could beat that to, we could beat that to death some more if we want, but I think we've covered that.
I'm okay with eight to ten feet. I I'm, I don't think we want to make massively wide trails. Um, and if there are conflicts that are occurring, then we've got to deal with those, but I would just assume, you know, keep it at the standards that are, you know, typically used or that we traditionally use.
Can I ask you another one? What is a suitable trail surface? This is my lack of knowledge with the what's a natural, natural surfaces can sustainably accommodate specific uses. What do you mean by that?
Well, basically, it's one that won't erode, uh, you know, quickly. Um, so it's it it's one that can tolerate uh, multiple uses and, you know, kind of continual, you know, use levels over time so that it's not, it's not required to have maintenance uh, free.
And it's like creative too, right? I feel like I've heard staff talk about different options and different ways to do it, just depending on trail, you know, a bunch of different options.
I mean, crusher fines, uh, crusher fine service might be, you know, appropriate and a a natural surface might be appropriate if, you know, it's properly constructed and stuff. I just want to make sure there's a distinction between paved and unpaved. But mostly it's whether the the trail surface can withstand whatever the uses are in a, you know, in a reasonable timeframe.
Yeah, again, like our current practices, we have what we call trail management objectives and we specify like what's the designed use and what's the managed use and then we get into like accessibility. Are we are we managing for like um, mobility device like a wheelchair and having the right slopes and surface.
We were told that we don't need to consider ADA here because Francis is going to come back and do that.
Do all that, yeah.
So we're not going into ADA.
But a lot of these, Jeff, are kind of what was in the memo.
Right.
As far as uh, you know, criteria that staff uses. And so my feeling was that it's you know, it's basically what you're using.
Crusher finds typically if we do surfacing, especially on the plains where you have soils that are.
Right.
Not very good for.
Indeed, this, we didn't use trail width as a criteria in our.
No, I know.
Okay.
I know that, that, you know, that that came up elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, so, yeah, I think it goes.
Francis is unmuted. She was gonna say.
Okay, sorry.
Just quickly to add some context for trails that we, you know, primarily manage bikes, but that are multi-use. Uh, the max width that we manage for O S M P specific trail standards, that's much more aligned with for service nationwide standards is six feet max.
Six feet?
Unless we're managing vehicles as well, like authorized motor vehicles. So six feet would be kind of our highest level of development uh, bike multi-use trail.
But.
Unless it's agreed, my like mentioning.
My experience is that leaves no room for pedestrians. Like if you go out to Marshall Trail. That's, I think, six feet wide, but chances of getting a pedestrian on there are slim.
And maybe just reiterate that we um, the human dimensions group did pull some of our uh, conflict and displacement data that's, I think, in attachment E. So, you know, we we are measuring things like displacement and um, you know, it's like highest area is Chautauqua where bikes are not allowed. So there's not a very direct correlation like of that that we're seeing in our visitor data.
Yeah, and I've read all that. And my my response is when you don't have people there because they've left, you can't measure conflict. Because they're not there.
So Francis, eight to ten feet. Uh, given uh, those standards certainly is workable. That, that's a question.
And Francis, that aligns more with our.
Do ahead, do I end?
Yeah, I mean, under our TMOs, that would be workable if we're managing authorized motor vehicle use on that trail or we're uh, managing it to more of that Ashtoe Greenway standard for inner uh, department. Like greenways. So, you know, it is workable. I think the question is, is that really a criteria you want in all future decisions?
I said, I'm trying to think of a real life example where this would actually happen. Would it be like Chapman? Because Chapman's managed for roads. It's a natural surface. It's wider than eight to ten feet. Would it? Is there, are there any other real life examples? Because this motion and this this compromise is interesting. But only interesting if you can't apply it to any actual real life examples.
So like the South Boulder Creek Trail. Is that width? I mean, it's managed for vehicle use. It's.
You know, but it's not multi-jurisdictional.
But then you could.
It's all within the city.
And you can't say that there would be no impact to any other uses. Like, that's an absolute statement. Of course, there will be some impact to some use in somebody's perception. But I I I just, I think that this list is just, it it's a an interesting gesture, but it's not actually going to accomplish anything. And if that's your, that's your your point and your intent, okay, fine. But um, but just know that we're, you're, you're creating criteria that basically is saying it's it's a non-issue anyway. Because it ain't gonna happen.
Are you saying my intent is not to accomplish anything?
Well, I mean, I just don't know that how this would actually fit into a a real life example. And I'm not really expecting that I'm going to change anybody's mind. Just want to put that out there.
I'm really concerned for the eighty-five percent of the users who are not bikers having space on the trails. And it's not okay with me to take one trail after another. I mean, we have over fifty miles of trails that have already been taken over by bikes.
And that's interesting language saying taking, you know, taken over by bikes. I think we generally operate from a a place of fear rather than a place of fact. And this is a great example of how we're trying to create policy. trying to create policy based on fear and not facts.
Exaggerating. But you need the data. Are you talking about like the tracking data from the trailheads?
I'm talking about the data that shows that that pedestrians have left use of use of that trail and that bikes dominate.
That's not true in Chautauqua. I mean, bikes are not allowed in Chautauqua.
I'm not talking about fear. I'm talking about over fifty miles of trail that that are used by bikes at the exclusion of pedestrians.
And how about the other hundred miles of of trails that are that don't allow bikes and the additional hundred and fifty of undesignated trail that also do not allow bikes?
But you're saying to solve the problem, you're saying that it's the distance of the trail that you think is causing um both users to not be able to go exist well.
Mine in the west, Caroline, you said distance. Do you mean?
Yeah, I meant with, thank you.
My concern, my concern is if we if we designate trails as multi-use trails, but there's wa- they're wide enough so they can accommodate what ultimately will be heavy and heavier bike use and still allow for heavier and heavier pedestrian use.
So Karen, what I'm in, what I'm assuming is that the trails that we are targeting in this particular language are are multi-use trails, they're multi-jurisdictional trails, so they've they theoretically meet most or all of these standards. And so we're not talking about three foot wide trails. We're talking about regional trails. We're talking about wide trails. Um, and and so I I think we we agree that, you know, if, I don't know, Francis, maybe go six to ten or I it's something that's mostly just to say, look, there's it's gotta be sufficient width to accommodate multiple uses.
With having the vehicle as a solution? Having a vehicle be able to drive?
Width width can always support more capacity. I mean, but I I think if we really dive into a conversation that like Michelle's bringing up and then Francis is chiming in, there's a lot of factors that go into visitor experience and safety.
That's correct.
And I think if Francis were to speak more of a lot of the data we see and 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 you're right, Michelle, we've mentioned a lot of this in previous packets and you know, when someone is on a trail, maybe they're hiking or running pedestrian. There's a lot that goes into, are they not feeling comfortable? Are they feeling discouraged by bike use? Are they choosing to go to another place? Because by I think there's a lot that goes into that. And that's why I was saying even a lot of times adding more width doesn't necessarily solve the problem. Then you even.
No, if you have speeding bikes going past, you have speeding bikes.
Yeah, so that it's a real tricky, complicated. It's hard to say. Yeah, if we want to have bikes, let's do A, B, C, and D, because especially in the context of open space. A lot of times having well-designed, well-built trails that are multi-use are we see people using them much more frequently and all types of users feeling safe and comfortable in that in that regard.
See, I think the most dangerous trails in the city are the greenways. Well, because you and uh uh the injuries I've had for biking are 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 all on greenway trails. So I agree. I uh, I I think, you know, we can kind of talk about this till cows come home, but you know, it's like, it's got to be reasonable. It's got to be fairly wide and it's got to be able to accommodate multiple uses. And it we're gonna have to depend on staff, which I am very confident in to make those calls.
May I make an observation? Sometime ago, Dave, you were talking about exceptions, so where activities were not allowed unless there was an ex- exception.
Right.
So maybe what we want to say instead is, you know, something, just to use a simple, super simple example, fishing isn't allowed except for posted.
Right.
Um, and and you're gonna hate me say for saying this, but maybe we say except where, you know, Mount, um, they're prohibited except where um authorized by a city manager rule. And that's where the department applies standards and we can you can develop standards for when um the department would ask the city manager to have that kind of a rule. So e-bikes are allowed where posted or they're not allowed except where posted. And it's the the department through the city manager that identifies where it can be posted, where where that posting would be applying criteria that the department develops.
Uh, so would that replace the bullets?
Yes, and actually it would say believe and says no.
Alternative.
No person other than persons authorized by the city manager.
So Janet, I'm okay with, actually, I think that's a good suggestion after except, you know, so the wording would be after except, but I'd also want to keep in there and we're a mo- you know, multi-jurisdictional regional tra- trail. So that so there is some uh, you know, focus or target or limit on, you know, kind of what what is being considered.
So maybe after the word contiguity. And well, it already says authorized by city manager. Thank you, Karen, for for pointing that out.
I mean, we could say we're a special designation and enforcement requirements have been posted. Or I guess wait, uh, I requirements necessary to meet, you know, blah, 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 we're posted.
Well, or maybe you just don't even have the list because wouldn't visitor management goals or is there something that we can a way that we can describe it to meet land protection, natural resource, visitor management goals and is and consistent with, you know, is there's a plan that's already in place that we can draw into that to to create a standard?
It's not the master.
You're saying that like in related to creating a standard that would entail?
Consistent with the word after. You know, just say consistent with and refer to another document that I can't imagine.
Is Janet saying that after the word except you put where posted and then you and you're saying you continue with the rest of the sentence?
I'm also seeing a redundancy. We should just stop it after goals in the last sentence because we're repeating recreational path or trail. So visitor mass management goals, period. We've already said that in the first part, but but that's just a cleanup. It doesn't get to the idea of how to define what criteria will be applied in in um authorization by the city manager.
So are you are you thinking right now about removing and saying we're posted or how to keep both or what?
Uh, I'm thinking both, except we're posted and then in where multi-jurisdictional trail.
Is it that you don't like the placement of where posted is?
Well, it's a little awkward.
Well, what if it was at the end of all of it? So determine necessary, so at the towards the end, determine necessary to meet land protection, natural resources, visitor management goals on any recreational path or trail, we're posted or on open space, we're posted?
Not the inverted at the beginning. Is that what you're saying?
The the other thing is, uh, I'm thinking maybe uh that at the end of the third line is where special designation and enforcement requirements are posted and have been determined necessary.
Yeah, I like that. I think so far that's the best model.
And yeah.
Are posted or where posted? For special designation and.
Enforcement requirements.
Oh, actually, I can't read. Enforcement requires are posted. Been determined.
Does that sense, does that help, Janet? Because theoretically, the end of that was uh where we say uh necessary to be land protectional. I mean, theoretically, that's assumed, that that's the deal. The the thing that I'm concerned about is that connectivity and contiguity of regional trails not being only determinant uh as far as um the consideration of the use. And so it's like, well, it's got to be, you know, the 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 whole gamut of uh, you know, management.
Considerations.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, like the connectivity might be what brings it forward to be discussed for design.
Yeah.
Right.
But they also um have to have that additional criteria.
Right. And I'm okay if we get rid of the bullets. Um, I don't know, maybe we just we we don't include them in the motion, but we include them in, you know, the board. What is the board doing? Not make a motion?
Discussion and explanation.
Yes, just something like that.
Are you? Are you sure?
Put it down below. After the second.
So should I read it again?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I move uh, the open space board recommends to city council revise language for section eight three six of the bullet revised code vehicle regulation. No person other than persons authorized by the city manager shall operate an electric assist a bicycle or other mechanized power assist a vehicle on any open space lands as defined in city charter section one seventy, except where multi-jurisdictional regional trail trail requiring access to a segment of open space trail to enable connectivity and contiguity and where special designation and enforcement requirements are posted and have been determined necessary to meet land protection, natural resources, visitor management goals on any recreational path or trail on open space land as defined in city charter section one seventy.
I think we'll second that as well.
I would just say I think you need to just end the sentence after goals because it's redundant.
Uh, that's fine.
Yeah.
And I would second that as well.
That was a that was a friendly suggestion.
Okay, can I ask a question of applying this? If this were applied to, for instance, the Lobo Trail. Would it allow staff to allow electric motor bicycles on the segments that the city owns out there? That's a question to Casey and Marnie.
Well, if I could just chime in, first of all, I think we would take a brand new ordinance language that we haven't really sat down and discussed with the city attorney's office to see how this would apply in order to meet not only the spirit, but the, you know, the specific intent of this. So we would first get guidance from CAO, but and we'd want to find out what the final ordinance language is, but let's say this is it. I think our first thing would be probably to get a meeting with Janet to kind of walk through and get her guidance on exactly what it would do, but is is maybe a question back to you, Karen, is is your question like you would hope that that would be an example where this language would apply? Are you are you saying this would pro- are you hoping it would prohibit it and then from something like?
I'm asking if the way you interpret the intent here would allow you to include the segments out in the Lobo Trail that are city-owned to be included in the Lobo Trail.
Well, I would ask Karen or or Janet the question of requiring access. That's an interesting term where a multi requiring access to a segment and get wanting to get legal interpretation of that, that would come to my mind. Uh, enabling connectivity you know, uh, and and designation enforcement requirements are posted and have been determined necessary, determined necessary is an interesting phrase that I think our staff would want guidance on. But I I guess yes. I mean, this would probably be one of those that we would probably feed through and and seems like the intent here would be is that would be one that would pass this muster. But again, that was just my twenty-second look at this without even talking to Janet about it.
The spirit of.
Yeah.
I can't really. In the spirit of, I said, you know, maybe we could say like it maybe it could be in the spirit of this, exactly. I have these questions about the specifics and it's hard for me to answer. Like using which verbs for action and are those actions enforceable or regulated by law? Am I following like what we're talking about by saying that?
Yeah, I mean, to me, the words requiring, I would want interpretation of that enabling um uh and have been determined necessary to me. Those are all phrases that I think we would first want to get clear determination definitionally on, and then we would go to work on where where maybe that would apply once we got that clarity.
So Dan, my response to that in general uh is that those words are in there to actually uh guide and protect staff in in the decision-making so that my my sense of use and the reason I thought requiring is is a good word is that, look, it won't work unless, you know, uh, a multi-jurisdictional regional trail won't work unless there, you know, these segments are uh approved. Um, you know, enabling connectivity and continuity. I thought that was kind of what we're trying to do. And determine necessary is is, you know, a a check by staff on making sure that you know, all the all the boxes are checked, that, you know, there's not, they're not going to be having to to answer uh later on about how the decision got made.
So except where a multi-jurisdictional regional trail requiring e-bike access to a segment because is that, going back to the that first sentence, is that the intent, not just requiring access, but requiring continued e-bike access?
Like, I read it as like county-owned. Like, I read it as like county owns, county owns.
Oh, I, yeah.
Right?
I, I understand the intent. I'm, I'm just looking at it.
E-bike, the whole section is for e-bikes. So it's operating electric assisted bike or other mechanized. It, it's prohibited except for access for those uses. So it's an e-bike or other mechanized power assisted vehicle would, you know, would be used. So I don't think we should put e-bikes that get required e-bike access because that's the, that's the whole thing upon that section is e-bikes.
It's talking about the whole thing is.
In the other mechanized power assisted vehicle references, you know, people in nineteen uh, when was that? Nineteen eighty-two or whenever it was, uh, when the charter languages develop nineteen sixty-seven. They had no idea about, you know, battery operated bicycles. And so it wasn't a concept, but I'm thinking, okay, you know, what if people got, you know, solar panels and decided that they were gonna, you know, have a bicycle that's operated by a solar panel? Um, and so I consider that to be another mechanized power assisted vehicle. And so this language is intended to meet, you know, some future, be clear on in the future on what it is we're talking about. Because I don't think, if we've talked previously, I don't think it was clear and people just in the past just didn't think they had they didn't even think about it. They didn't think they had to, you know.
So it opens up the options.
Right.
That there might be, you know, a third entity besides your feet and the pedals that will make you go.
Right. Uh, it, it, the attempt is to make it as simple and clear, clear as possible. So if that's not happening, we should, uh, we should try to make that happen.
Just being cautious and, and giving you a yes or no answer of how we would apply this language when this is, we're, we're just seeing it. I mean, I think the spirit.
I understand the spirit.
Yeah, if you're talking, if you just want to talk about in spirit, it seems like the Lobo Trail would be an example of this making it through.
We, we don't want to make life more difficult for staff. But we want to make sure that, again, like I said, you know, the boxes are checked. And if the decision, the decisions are clear and, and defensible.
Chewing on your point, Dan, I was just thinking about what you said with the words as you pointed out. Would you feel like falling back on um, the master plan that those words in that language is in the master plan which develops? Those types of ideas or does that not seem the same either? I don't know that I even agree with what I'm saying. I'm just asking.
Yeah.
It's late, Caroline.
Well, I mean, I think, I think your, uh, Janet sort of preference up a front is that ultimately the city attorney's office is responsible for writing language for the
Excuse me?
For the council on, on ordinance changes. So maybe if there are a few words in here that are gonna need. I mean, that, that's also probably a next step, but I'm not a lawyer, but those were the few, few words that just gave me a little pause in terms of how I would, you know, interpret it. And I, I think I would add, you know, it's a complex situation. I think when the staff presented their recommendation and all the criteria, there's been so many conversations like, how, how do we really effectively do this, you know, that's can be enforced, makes sense to the users achieving, you know, and so as I think through this, I, I, I'm thinking back to also like, at the end of the day, if we really went through an exercise and really think, would we kind of end up with alternative B, or I'm not sending us into a tailspin, but you, you'd have to start asking, well, multi-jurisdictional regional, you know, you could start to think through like, there's a variety of regional connections. So I just kind of go back to the staff or the, I think a lot of that thought kind of went into that recommendation too, that I think you're, you're trying to support it. It's getting pretty close.
Well, if we are allowed to make any recommendation to council, can we recommend due to time restraints that this was, you know, close to a stopping point and have something to have them look at it and be able to further continue? Is that? No? I'm just trying to give us.
We're trying to get as much.
Who is they? Have them looking at who is them?
If?
You're talking about Janet?
Yeah, like, let's say we go for another five minutes and then we hit another point and it's just not going to be done in a timeframe of tonight. Is there a way to keep it alive so that it's not just being sent, um, seemingly finished if we're not finished? I'm just trying to give us an option if everyone, um, tries to, I mean, I'm, I'm still here. I look, but I'm still here, but.
My strategy, Caroline, is to take so long that, uh, Michelle and John. So, so we got, we got hours to go.
Yeah, scare everyone. So just chill out.
Sorry, Dave, I've got a pot of coffee here that I can make. Well, I can outlast you.
She's at, she's at home with a pillow, so.
I've been through a lot of these.
That's true, that's true.
I think a suggestion of this would work. Could you do something like Dave moved to recommend to the city council, you know, revised language for section eight three six similar, you know, in the spirit of what's below? And then if that gets like approved in you, the ordinance readings, you refined it or something? I'm, I don't know. I don't even know if Janet, if that's a possibility, but I'm trying to figure out a solution that the way the motion is written states that we want something like this. And yet we realize two or three words might need to be changed. So I, you know, I've
Yeah, because it is important.
Well, that's what Janet suggested a little while.
Yeah, it's gonna happen anyway.
So why is that sub, submits beneath that some legalese that's approved by the C A O?
Yeah, something like that. And then that I think it's to your point.
And I guess I, I don't know that we have to say that if Janet isn't that what's gonna happen?
That's what's going to happen.
So, so I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and vote and, uh, then it gets handed to the city attorney's office.
Understanding the intent from all.
Yeah. And, and then if, if we can take a look at it at some point soon, uh, we can say, yeah, it looks like, that looks good or, you know, or not.
Well, let me get clarification on that then. You'd be expecting that once council or one city attorney has the draft ordinance language that instead of going into the city council packet, this board would want to take a, another look at the ordinance and okay the ordinance before then it gets.
I think if, informally, I, you know, I don't want to stop the packet going to council, but it would just be informative for the board to say, okay, you know, this is what's gonna go. And if you hear a lot of screaming, then then it might be worth pulling it. If everyone does the head nod, then you know, it's good to go. It just, it's just, I think, kind of closes the loop for the board. Um, to make sure we know kind of what's ultimately.
What's moving forward.
Right. Okay, just, just a heads up, that looks, that's probably the April board meeting. Just to let you know.
What month is that?
Yeah, I don't know. Whatever. When, when were you thinking that it would go earlier than that?
No, I think we're scheduled for late April into May, and that's depending on, we haven't even spoken to C A C on, on the exact timing of when they would want to handle it, but we were thinking later April and then finishing up in mid to late May, I think was our timeline for council, but that hasn't gone through C A C and council scheduling yet.
Well, I don't think the board wants to throw a monkey wrench into the works. Um, it would just be more, just, you know, for your information. Here's what's going. Just so we know.
The agenda committee determines when boards and commissions should be requested to address the council concerning their deliberations and when matters should be referred back to a board or commission before council action is taken. The rules and procedures.
Or
Council procedures.
Council procedures.
So does that Janet, does that mean? I don't know what that means. Can I, I mean, I can bring this over to you so you can look at it as opposed to me reading it. If that's better.
The, it's a board procedure. Council procedure.
Oh, the council procedure? It said, um, I, my eyes are so tired, I can't find it. The agenda committee determines when boards and commissions should be requested to address council concerning their deliberations and when matters should be referred back to a board or commission before council action is scheduled.
This is just a courtesy.
Yeah.
It's, it's really, it's, it's meant to be.
Put this language in the, in the memo to cancel as a motion and and then, and then.
Then it's legalese underneath it. To, to try to capture the intent of, of what the board has said tonight. I think that's what you said.
That'd be great. Where'd you get that?
Pulled out a little document right in the last minute, huh?
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
I am, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
John is behind.
Absolutely. He's already told me.
Okay. Um. John?
No.
Dave?
Yes.
Caroline?
Yes.
Michelle?
No. Sorry, Dave.
I, I'm gonna vote yes as well. So it's a three to two vote. Do you want to go ahead with anything else?
Oh. Can I just mention some, uh, two points of just, uh, that I want listed that, um, in support of my dissent?
True.
Um, reason why I'm, um, not voting for this is because I think we need to make it clear to the community that we support e-bikes. Um, this exception approach is complicated and will make implementation, compliance, and enforcement impossible. We also need to signal to our neighboring land managers that we support consistent connectivity. And this motion does not do that.
Shall we say that last part again? Let neighboring land entities know that.
Um, let's see. Well, neighbor and and land managers um, need to signal to neighboring land managers that we support consistent connectivity. And this motion does not do that. You have anything to add to that, John?
I mean, I I, I don't think you need to add anything to this, but you know, I appreciate that you're trying to compromise here with this, Dave. But I think that fundamentally, like saying that e, e-bikes are not allowed, you know, does not bring us in line with neighboring agencies. Um, you know, we need to be signaling that we are, I think that we should allow, you know, e-bikes explicitly. And that's, that's my main, you know, issue with it. Um, along with what Michelle said here. You know, uh, I think, you know, you, you ask in your questions that you send to staff, you know, why, why aren't surrounding agencies following us on this? And I think it's because we're not leading on this issue. We're trailing, you know, with regressive policies. And I think what you have here doesn't go far enough, you know, it's to take a step forward. Um, you know, the, the open space department was founded by progressive visionaries that had a vision for our community and the environment and the planet. Um, and I think, you know, what we voted for here, um, is, you know, it's out of fear, it's short sighted and it's regressive. And I, I don't think it's visionary and stands for what open space was founded on.
Well, I appreciate both of your comments. Uh, obviously, I, I don't agree. And in fact, that as far as responding to you, China, I would say that this is in the spirit of the founders of the program. So, um, and Michelle, I, I would be happy to, uh, use all of your suggested language for justification for my vote as well. Um, so uh, other than the approach is complicated and will make compliance and enforcement impossible. I, I don't think that, but I certainly think that, you know, we support e-bikes. It's just that we don't support e-bikes, uh, everywhere on open space trails. And, uh, we do support consistent connectivity. And I, I think the mode, the intent of the motion is to certainly, uh, contribute to that. So.
Yeah.
Um.
And I do appreciate that part of your, your motion that stood.
So we'll
And I think, I, I think we need to say that, that, uh, O S M P or O S B T cannot agree with the neighboring public lands agencies because of the, uh, principles established in the city charter. And as several speakers said, even just tonight, um, without a vote of the public, I don't believe we can change the charter.
Yeah, and I think that's the fundamental.
Yeah, I think that's the fundamental disagreement here is that.
And you don't have to change the charter.
Yeah, that's your argument.
And the city attorney's office.
We could get attorney said with that.
Everyone.
So thanks, uh, for all of your participation and hanging in there. I know it's, uh, it's been challenging and somewhat awkward. But we appreciate.
I echo that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I have a question for all there. Um, when this goes to council, is there an opportunity for either John or I to speak, um, on our dissenting opinions as these motions went down? Or does it just, uh, and would, would we need to establish that tonight?
Um, I think the way our rules say, I think that our rules say that the chair represents the board. And the reason for the your, uh, the dissenting votes explaining their vote in the notes of the meeting is so that those reasons are clear and the chair can represent them to council.
And the chair allow, delegate somebody else to, to speak on that opinion and would she? Or I should say with they. This, uh, is, uh, probably an April, May issue.
I don't think so. I think it's perfectly clear in the rules.
Yeah, I mean, but yes, they could delegate. Um, I, I think Karen's right, though the council, uh, doesn't necessarily want to hear from every board member. Um, and so we've got to be, we as the board has to have to be somewhat strategic about, you know, how we want it. we've got to be, we as the board has to have to be somewhat strategic about, you know, how we want to do that.
Well, if they wanted to, they would probably reach out to Dan first and then Dan and Karen would talk and then it would go from that down, down that cycle.
I recall when I was on Prab that that I was asked to come speak to council. And I think they, they had asked me to, to come speak on my opinion, my dissenting opinion. But I guess they could formally request that then.
Yeah, I'm just looking through the rules of procedure and I'm not seeing a very specific language to this specific question, but maybe for next month, we could come back and just see if we have any guidance for what, what existing language says or doesn't say.
When it breathes a little bit.
But it does speak specifically to a minority decision being reflected in the minutes.
Right.
But I'm not seeing anywhere of who speaks. If, if it's required at all for a minority dissent to be spoken to council, but I'll, I'll contend.
Yeah, maybe Dan that that the agenda setting or whatever, you know, process that the council does to set their agenda. You, yeah, CAC, you could, um. Yeah.
Yeah, that we have to, we have a dissenting vote and.
Yeah, how, how do they want to handle that?
That could be something that could.
Well, if anybody on council is listening to this tape at some point in the future, that offer is out there. I think I, I would be willing to do that and, and John probably would too.
If it's kosher. I'm not suggesting that we, we do anything that's not kosher.
Yeah, just as a majority of the board may delegate or appoint the chair and or other members of the board to assist in the presentation of the board recommendations to the city manager or to the city council. Any presentation of a recommendation should also include a synopsis of any dissent. So it's.
What was the first thing you said?
A majority of the, a majority of the board may delegate or appoint the chair and or other members of the board to assist in the presentation of the board recommendations to the city manager or to the city council. Any presentation of a recommendation should also include a brief synopsis of any dissent. So the dissent needs to be explained. The majority of this board would then, would appoint the person to represent the board at the council.
And, and if I may add to that or clarify, so in our guiding principles for interactions among councils, boards, commissions and staff, it does say boards and commission members who wish to explain or advocate positions to the council should identify themselves as board members and clarify whether they are speaking from a personal position or on behalf of the majority or minority position that the board has taken. So I think that authorizes the minority position to have the floor.
More than one spokesperson.
Exactly. So the minority position can be expressed as well.
That's clear.
Daylight camera.
Thanks for that, Janet. That's how I recall it when I was on Prab. And I think I've seen it go down in tab as well.
One other issue that I want to bring out for Stephen is that, that the county for regional trails, it's the county transportation department that's the lead organization within the county. For regional trails. And I'm wondering if, or, or parallel professional interactions. The city transportation and the mobility department doesn't need to take the lead in working with the county transportation department on regional trails. So that there's that professional parallelism between county regional trails and city regional trails.
Are you asking, are you asking who are the players at the table on regional trail conversations? And does our city department transportation take an equal role as county on these regional trails? Casey is most involved and Marty, I would, first, I'll turn it over to you, but I think since most, some of the trail segments are out in the county on open space lands that may not eventually impact or intersect with city managed trails, the city transportation department handles. On those occasions, we're probably a leading voice for the city because of the open, on the open space impacts or issues that are involved. So, but certainly on those trails that.
Take, take, for instance, Burt, because we got a good map of alternatives that are being considered. And there's this, is it called the Valmont Elizabeth? Corridor. Isabel, thank you, corridor. And that's along Valmont. And then there's some options that use some of the RTV trail and then come down to the streets.
There's another option that uses the entire, you know, corridor of, of, of RT, of the RTV right way. Then there's another option that deviates from it and and goes on up.
So that's obviously a city, county. And are there any other municipalities involved?
Yes, yeah, Erie's involved and on RTV. And I'm not going to remember all of the stakeholders, but yes, the other, there are other municipalities involved. Yes.
So who, who represents those? Are those, are those transportation departments that are involved in that discussion or?
Open space, like it's open space for Boulder County parks and open space. Because they're also part of that. And then it's, I believe it's Erie open space. So they're just structured differently with the, with, you know, at the county. So it's, it's a little hard to compare apples to apples because the regional trails planner there does some transportation led more initiatives and trails and also does more soft surface passive rec regional that kind of goes across multi-jurisdictional lines. So she does both that role within.
In the county department of transportation.
She is, but you know, there, her, the, it's the regional trails program is nested within that umbrella. So they're just structured, you know, slightly differently than than the city as far as that goes. We do, do work with like the city, you know, um, we have, you know, uh, at times we do have the city like for the bike way for, um, the lines to Boulder, like we, we, you know, we kind of coordinated with city transportation. So there are some instances where it makes sense. We, the lines of communication are pretty open and we, we talk pretty regularly about who needs to be at the table for each one. I think when we say regional trails, I think what also gets complicated is sometimes we're talking about large regional trails, sometimes we're talking about local connections. And so there's a variety of types of trails within that umbrella term. So that kind of, that can kind of confuse, confuse matters. We use, like we recommend regional trails in our North TSA that connect to Boulder County. We call those regional trails, right? So I'm not, I'm assuming you wouldn't, you're not suggesting that Boulder County with transportation would want to take the lead on a trail that's going from open, you know, just on open space to open space, right? So we call all those things under that umbrella term. I, yeah, I'm, I'm tired and I probably got on too long. I'll stop there and see if I hit the mark in any way and then.
And Karen, are you, are you trying to ensure that on a city of Boulder side, we have transportation, expertise, experience, knowledge, not just opens, is that where you're?
Well, it strikes me that some of these trails, and you hit on it when you said there are different kinds of regional trails. I mean, the, the county is planning a regional trail up the center of the diagonal between the two, two diagonal roads. That's a regional trail.
Of the bike way there.
And the bike way, and that's a commuter regional trail.
It's a bike. And so, and then I would say also our city transportation leads those types of initiatives too. I mean, most of the time it's the county because our lands and we, in those types of instances, we are involved as the adjacent land owner and our goal is a little differently. It's about minimizing impacts. And I would say our city transportation often has the same asks of us as Boulder County, like they would like to widen the streets and, you know, and, you know, use open space lands for transportation purposes of those requests, you know, to accommodate, you know, transportation improvements. And so our interaction with them can be very similar to the county or the requests. The city transportation and county transportation requests as far as bike ways though, can be very similar to open space. Like.
But when it, one of the reasons why I'm asking this is because the charter doesn't state as a purpose of open space, either transportation or commuting. That's not what open space lands are for. So I'm assuming those functions fall under transportation and mobility for the city, right?
The bike ways?
Transportation and commuting.
Yes, correct.
So if we're talking about a trail for commuters, I'm assuming it's done by the transportation and mobility department, not by OSMP because we don't have any function in establishing or managing commuter trails.
Correct. We have passive recreational trails, although we know some people like to go the slow route and they might they might get from point A to point B on a recreational fail, but correct. I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't, ours are multi, ours are for passive recreation.
Yep.
And so transportations are strictly for transportation. That's where our role is slightly different. It's.
So, so when the county transportation department establishes this huge long trail along the edges of Arapahoe and goes through open space land to get there, are those lands disposed of for that trail?
Yeah. So the only one, yes, if it's just a bike way, that's strictly for transportation, then our, our thoughts are about minimizing and things are disposed of. When it has a dual purpose, like it actually is, like if it was designated as part of the Rocky Mountain Greenway or had it a dual recreational purpose, then that's when the disposal requirement might not exist. So like, if we, if we had a separated bike way that we used for, for part of a regional passive recreational, regional trail type of connection, it, that's hasn't really happened because typically but you see where I'm going, like the RMG, we've talked about co-locating that along a potential bike way. And so that one might be an instance where it's transportation and a passive recreational part of a regional trail. That doesn't currently exist. Most of the transportation initiatives like along Arapahoe would just strictly be a transportation and never require disposal.
If it's within the transportation easement corridor.
Right.
Then there's a layer of that that's involved.
Correct.
But like the Rocky Mountain Greenway, which is really predominant, predominant, like the Rocky Mountain Greenway connection to the south between Colton Trail and then Rocky Flats is there really isn't a transportation function. It's land managers in open space. And that's where, going back to different types of regional trails, there, as Casey said, there might be users that are traveling on there and getting from point A to B, but it's still a recreational.
But the latest, the latest route for that that I've seen went National Wildlife Refuge Colton.
Yeah.
Up to thirty six and on to thirty six bike path, right?
Yes.
So I think the motion that we just passed could connect that segment of the Colton Trail. It's OSMP with in spirit, at least, as you're saying.
Within county part of, of course, Rocky Flats.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, I was long-winded and slaked.
So I don't want this meeting to end too early or prematurely. So I have one, one more thing to, to bring up. And I, I was going to make this a motion, but given the conversation this evening, I, I just want to make it part of the record and convey that I have some concerns about the board's role in, I had issues like determining whether e-bikes are passive recreational uses. And so the language that I put together for motion basically confirms that that the open space board making recommendations to the council on the use of electric motor assisted bicycles fulfills the roles and function of the open space board of trustees as defined in city charter, article twelve, section one seventy five. That this is an important part of our role, that, that reading the memo kind of uh, between the lines. It, it, it just concerned me that the, the role of the open space board was, was either tangentially referred to or, or somewhat dismissive. And from my perspective, this is exactly our role and responsibility. And I do appreciate the staff work providing that, but I think we end up certainly making those recommendations to council.
Yeah, and your purview and your role is very broad in, you know, to provide recommendations and input to the department on any management activity that we, we wrest with. And that's your purview and we'll support you in that. And I think Karen did a good job of summarizing all the touches that have been done with this board on the e-bike issue since 2013, including four or five touches in the past eight months. So I I, I hope, I, I hope we weren't coming off as dismissive with this board. We thought we put a lot of time and energy in working with you on it.
Well, there may be some question in the community about the board's role. And I just want to reemphasize that this is a part of the role and function of the open space board. Thanks.
Okay.
Dan, we get Dan.
Oh, okay. I've got one update and I, and I hope so. I just want to welcome Heather Swanson to our new interim deputy director for resource and stewardship. And I hopefully I don't give a resignation letter tomorrow. But we're really looking forward to working with Heather in her new capacity and, and her role. And just want to recognize that her term began on Monday, so.
I mean, honestly, these meetings used to go till one PM or one AM like on the regular, right? Like, do you remember? I feel like we used to go late a lot. I feel like we're getting, we're getting light weights now. It's eleven o'clock. We're all tired.
It's eleven thirty.
Welcome, Heather. Good night, you all.
All right. Good night, Michelle.
Are we gathering?
Yes, the thing is now adjourned.
Thank you.
Congratulations.